All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02. Today is Tuesday, May the 2nd, 2023. I'd like to bring this regular city council meeting to order. May we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Will the city secretary please call roll?
Mitchell, Tobias.
Here.
Heiser.
Here.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Zuniga.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Okay, at this time, council, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Travis Mitchell from roll call in the meeting. This is as a second from the second from within a 12-month period. It's an obligation he had to handle today. I'd like to go and make a motion.
Second.
Second motion by Parsley.
Do we know why?
It seems like there was a, an obligation that he needed to get into. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next up on the, on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. With that, I'd go, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve the minutes for special meeting on April 14th and also the regular council meeting for April the 18th.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Tobias, second by Parsley. Is there any discussions on the motion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have citizens' comments period. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments on any agenda items or subjects related to the city. We ask you that you keep your comments within the required three minutes timeline. First off, we have Ms. Lila Knight.
Thank you. My name is Lila Knight. I was planning on coming here tonight to speak to you about something that's very near and dear to my heart, which is the history of Kyle and its preservation. But something more important has been brought to my attention. And that is that we have people being threatened with having their homes taken away from them by this city council and a development agreement, which is basically nothing more than a contract. I feel very strongly that the right of eminent domain by a municipality, a county, or the state should be entered into with the gravest concern. These are people's homes. The cost doesn't even matter. It's where they've lived. And for some people, there is no price you can put on their home. So it really pains me to learn that this city council is so willing to promote growth in our city that you would allow this to happen. Not to mention that road will go over a major gas pipeline. Not exactly sure how you're gonna like do that, but I'm sure you'll figure it out. It's gonna cost us, not you. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Quail Ridge. You can just nod your head. Many of you have visited Quail Ridge? I've known it for a long time. It was here before I moved here in the 1980s. We had a former city councilwoman, Becky Silbera, who for years, decades, promised them a little park where their kids could play basketball. That never happened. There was a race car track that went out there that kept them awake Friday and Saturday nights, really awake. It makes the rail house or rail yard, whatever it's called, look like nothing. City did nothing to help. Fortunately, it went away. But now, once again, they're having problems. And even those who are, it's fine. Just showing that frustration.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Next up, we have Ms. Vanessa Westbrook.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Pro Tem, and citizens. My name is Vanessa Westbrook, and I'm the chair of the City of Kyle Arts and Cultural Commission. I'm speaking on behalf of a colleague, another commissioner, Ali Shavez, who could not be with us tonight. This is her project. I am here tonight because I am excited to announce that during the month of May, we have art in City Hall once again. This time, the art is being put on display by a very talented artist. Her name is Anna Martinez-Boling. She's standing here beside me. Anna is an artist, an attorney, and a serial volunteer in the City of Kyle, as she calls herself. I invite everyone to please come out during the month of May to come and see the work that Anna has on the wall of City Hall, not only on the first floor, but also on the second floor. Again, we're trying to bring art to the public places at the, for the City of Kyle. And I just wanted to officially welcome Anna and thank her for putting her work up on City Hall's walls for the month of May. Anna is here with me tonight.
Just thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anna. And I also wanted to add that on May the 5th, May 13th, we're doing an event across the street at the Kyle Railroad Depot. It's called "All Aboard: Acrylic Artists," calling all acrylic artists. We have opportunities for artists to literally come out and paint various aspects of the depot. And on the 13th, for the, we want everybody to come out and watch them work. And then those paintings will then be placed on City Hall so that all could come out and enjoy those particular pieces also. So just wanted to let you know, we have some things going on in the world of art for the City of Kyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Appreciate it very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come and speak? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close citizens' comments. Next up, we have the agenda order. There is, council has the opportunity to move any items up forward in retrospect for discussion and time schedule. Is there anybody that would like to move any items forward? Councilmember Flores Cale.
May I please move up my agenda? I am 27 before the consent and after the presentation.
Okay. So before consent, after. Okay.
Could I move 29 and 30 in front of the Trails presentation, if you don't mind?
Okay.
Just to leave it to the end.
To the end, okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we have Flores Cale moving up item number 27, and then we have Councilmember Zuniga, 29 and 30. Okay. All right, next up, we're gonna have appointments. This is to approve the appointment of Amber Schmitz to the 2023 Campo Technical Advisory Committee. Amber, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Amber Schmitz, Assistant City Manager for the record. This appointment is at the request of Campo. This will be for the small cities, 50,000 to 500,000 population. They ask for two representatives from the city. And in your backup, you have a guideline for those appointments. I spoke to Leon. He's happy being the alternate and doesn't really have time for another meeting, and so he can be the alternate. I think Harper doesn't care for another meeting as well, and so I'm here to fill in for that role. It was held by Jeff Prado.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussions on the agenda item? Go ahead, Councilmember Flores Cale.
My question is, if we get the new city manager and he's interested, is it hard to just switch you guys out?
I don't believe so. Yeah, we could just put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Councilmember Zuniga.
What are the typical dates and times for this meeting, Amber, that you need to go and attend?
I, I believe all the meetings now are virtual, which makes it easier. I think their office is on the north side of Austin, so it makes it a little difficult. I do plan on attending most of those meetings virtually. I believe they're once a month. Leon can probably help me out with that. Yeah, once a month.
Okay. And you have the bandwidth for it?
I do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Amber Schmitz.
Okay, motion's on the table for approval of the appointment to the 2023 Campo Technical Advisory. Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Do you have any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It looks like Carrie's six to zero. Thank you. Next up, we have the presentation segment. We're going to go with number six, Public Service Recognition Week proclamation by Councilmember Flores Cale.
All right, thank you. Whereas, public service is a calling which includes roles and professions crucial to propelling our country forward by unselfishly giving of oneselves to perform duties such as defending our nation, improving public infrastructure, maintaining public safety, education, and performing administrative and management duties, just to name a few. And whereas, as a nation, it was clearest in 2020 when millions of public service workers displayed remarkable resilience and dedication through, throughout one of our nation's most trying times by working through uncertain conditions as an attempt to bring stability back to our everyday lives. And whereas, the public service employees of the City of Kyle continue to display hard work and commitment to the highest standard of professional excellence, creativity, and customer service. And whereas, in order to continue to promote and inspire public service positions, it is essential we recognize and honor the dedicated, dedicated men and women who embody the spirit of service and their endless possibilities, which are the roadmap and backbone to the great nation we call home. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that we recognize the hard work and sacrifices of our public service workers, not only May 7th through May 13th, 2023, during Public Service Recognition Week, but also throughout the whole year. I mean, I just wanna say thank you to all of our staff. You've done an excellent, an excellent job, I would say, over the last year, as we all kind of struggle to put our pieces together and, and be glued to each other. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Flores Cale. Does anybody have like to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for bringing this forward. Yes, it is very important that we recognize all the public service that we have in our community. So would you like to do a photograph?
Whatever staff we have here, it's great.
Thank you. If we could have everybody that would like to be in the photograph, come to the front, please.
Marco got me a new phone today, y'all. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have another presentation given to us by Councilmember Bear Heiser for the Air Quality Awareness Week proclamation.
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Kathy Rager for the record. Councilmember Heiser, thank you so much for bringing forward the Air Quality Awareness Week. I just wanted to start off by just giving a little bit of information in appreciation of him bringing this forward. Our ozone season started on April 1st and lasted through October 31st. The biggest contributor to ozone in our area is mobile sources or vehicles. And vehicle emissions are also a large contributor, contributor to particulate matter in our area. The best description of particulate matter is diesel engines. When you see the black soot come out, that is particulate matter. In central Texas, roughly one out of every 16 kids have asthma, and there are approximately 14 annual asthma-related hospitalizations per 10,000 kids. The average cost of asthma hospitalization in 2016 was just under $24,000. I can't imagine that price has gone down. Reductions in short-term exposure to ozone, particulate matter, and other pollutants can help reduce asthma-related exacerbations and hospitalizations. Reductions in long-term exposure to particulate matter can help reduce the development of asthma in children in the first place. Asthma is a major noncommunicable disease affecting both children and adults, and is the most common chronic disease among children. Asthma is a condition in which a person's airways become inflamed, narrow, and swell, making it difficult to breathe, causing shortness of breath and tightness of the chest. Summer days in Texas are conducive for ozone due to the formation of high-pressure systems that dominate our local weather patterns in the summer, giving us clear skies but stagnant winds. The highest concentrations of ozone form on warm sunny days with light wind speeds, which allow for more air quality pollutants to form and accumulate at ground level. So that's why it is important for us as the city and as residents and businesses to try to do what we can during our ozone season. So thank you, Councilmember Heiser.
Great, thank you. Councilman Heiser, you wanna add a little?
Yeah, thank you, Kathy, for coming up here to speak. I just, you know, I'm not big on proclamations necessarily, but I do wanna draw awareness and let the experts come up and speak about the issues that are the most pressing for our city. And Kathy, thank you for, for doing that. And this issue is something that we, as a council, are working on right now with KPD to try to figure out a way for us to be able to better enforce some of, some things that we could help do to reduce some of the pollutants caused by a lot of the construction that's taking place in the city. And so it's on our radar, and we're looking for ways to, to try to bridge that gap. So thank you again.
Well, thank you very much. I can attest to that, being an asthmatic all my life, I understand whenever we also have weather pattern changes, especially when it rains. For me, I'm like, I'm wiped out. So I can imagine how kids today, or just people out there that are trying to exercise and be out there in the, in the open space, which we're always promoting, like Councilman Zuniga's always promoting about the environment, you know, which we appreciate a lot. We have to really look at that as a city to do our part to make sure that we have as much clean air, you know, for us to be able to breathe and so forth. And it is important. We hear about it all the time, about the, the populations in big cities where their air quality, like Los Angeles, Chicago, but those places. But we can do our best to try to, when, as we're doing our construction, when we have these big trucks that come in, we can do what we can to try to maybe regulate certain types of days to where we would have them go through. It's just, it's just something to keep on the radar and, and keep the, the box open on that end to where we can come up with ideas. So thank you, appreciate it. Did you wanna do a photograph as well, sir?
Okay, all right. Well, great, no problem. All right, the next item would be agenda number eight, but we're gonna go ahead and postpone that, and we'll move on to number nine. We're gonna move on to update on the various capital improvement projects, road projects, building programs, and other general operation activities where action's not required. So in turn, the Jerry Hendricks.
Mayor Council, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager for the record. I'd like to start my report this evening with our Parks Director, Mariana Espinoza.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. So I have some really good news, if you haven't heard, but the Vietnam Memorial Wall that heals is now in Kyle and at Lake Kyle, it arrived this morning. So tomorrow, all day, we'll be setting up the wall. And then on Thursday, the wall officially opens to the public. It will be open through Sunday at 2 o'clock on Sunday, May 7th. It is open 24 hours a day. And just a little bit about the Vietnam Memorial Wall that heals. It is a traveling exhibit that's exact replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall. It features more than 58,281 names of men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam, and more than, and it honors more than 3 million Americans who served in the U.S. Armed Forces in the Vietnam War. So we're very excited to host the wall. And if you get a chance, we do have the opening ceremonies Thursday morning and then the closing ceremonies on Sunday afternoon. And then in two and a half weeks, we will host the Kyle Fair, a tech extravaganza at Lake Kyle Park. It is a three-day festival on May 19th, 20th, and 21st. The event features a carnival, ribbon rita contest, fireworks on Saturday night, and then the Gathering of Kyles, which is Kyle's attempt to break the Guinness Book of World Records for the most Kyles in one place at a time. That will take place on Sunday afternoon. We have a great lineup of music Friday, featuring John Wolfe. Saturday, five-time Grammy Award winner, Little Joy La Familia. And Sunday, the spasmetics. On Friday morning, May 26th, we will officially break ground on our community garden with a very small ribbon cutting. Staff will be out there with the volunteer groups we've been working with to get going on our community garden, and all are welcome to attend. That's at the Post Oak Community Garden. And then at the end of the month, our pool will open to the public. And this is just a reminder that we will have free swim days on Mondays and Fridays. And the rest of the pool hours are on the website if there's any further questions. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mariana. Next up is Colleen Tierney, our Director of Library Services.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Colleen Tierney, Director of Library Services for the record. This Saturday, we have a book sale from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. 50 cents for paperback books, a dollar for hardcover, a dollar for DVDs, and you can get a bag of books that we provide, the bag, like a grocery bag full for $5, or a Friends of the Public Library bag for $15. And all the books that we're selling are donations and weeded books from our collection. Starting at the end of this week, we will have a short pause on our children's programming because we're preparing for our big summer reading event, events, programs. So there will still be our adult programming, but our children's program, like our Storytimes, Crafty Kids, those kinds of things will be paused until the June 2nd. And I'm gonna skip that and come back to it. Our summer reading program begins May 27th. The theme this year is Crack the Case. It's a detective sort of mystery-themed program. And there'll be lots of events for the family and for adults and kids alike. And there'll be opportunities to challenge yourself to read more and incentives for that for most adults and kids. And then on May 23rd, we will be having an Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month event, two different events, actually. We'll have Moana, the movie, played simultaneously with another event where people can make a Zen garden sort of meditative craft for ages 13 and up. And we will be partnering with the Arts and Cultural Commission. They are sponsoring some Asian food sampling that we'll have at the event as well, with some of our local businesses providing some of the food for the event. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Next up is Planning Director, Will Atkinson.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, please forgive me, I tweaked my back a couple days ago, so I'm taking a seat. So coming up this month, we have two opportunities for open houses for our trip number three that Verdunity's gonna come down for the comprehensive plan. The first one is Monday, May 22nd, from 1 to 4 at the Kyle Public Works Building. And then the second one will be on the same day, from 5 to 8, here at City Hall. And at both of these events, people who attend have the opportunity to win a free Costco membership for a year. So we're hoping we get a lot of people to show up and provide a lot of good input. Also, the night of Tuesday, May 23rd, at 6 p.m., we're having a joint P&amp;Z and council workshop to discuss two different potential growth scenarios that Verdunity has also put together. That's all I got.
Mayor Council, once again, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager for the record. First up on my report is July 4th is on a Tuesday, so I wanted to ask you if you want to consider moving that to either Monday or Wednesday. If we move it to Monday, then some people taking a long weekend might, might not find that preferable. And Wednesday is, is the day after the July 4th, and maybe that'd be the better day. But it's entirely up to you. You tell us, and we'll make it happen. If you wanna have it on Tuesday, July 4th, we just have our own fireworks here in council chambers.
How does, how does council feel about that? I know Mayor Mitchell's not here, but.
You wanna do another third?
Well, do you wanna do it the day after the fireworks?
Yes.
Well, because in case somebody. Well, well, here's the thing. I think what, what, what the mayor, what the, Jerry's saying is that some people may be taking an extended day on the, on the third, and then be off on the fourth, and then come back on the fifth. So, but it's something to keep in mind, we can, when Mayor gets back, we can.
There's also the option to cancel that meeting, but as we know, the, when you do that, the meeting before and the meeting after becomes really packed. So it's council's discretion, however you guys want to handle it. We obviously don't need an answer this evening. Something you guys can think about, and we'll bring it up again at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Can we get like a little survey out, so we get a general idea?
There are four Tuesdays in July. I thought there were maybe one more. Can we just like do it on the 11th and the 18th?
Do we have anything? I think there's something scheduled that week for the budget, correct? Or is it on the Friday week?
We'll send out the doodle poll. We'll note, we'll notice in that all the other nights that there's meetings for those two weeks, and we'll see where we land.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. I'm a city manager's discretion and skip a couple. I want to share our congratulations to Amanda Costa, who's been promoted to our lead utility billing clerk. That work group continues to grow and promote within, and they're doing awesome work there. And a lot of that is in part to support by the council and how we've been able to redo their work schedule, allow them time in the morning and afternoons to do trainings and, and start and stop their workday. So you can see Amanda's credentials. She's been here four years and eight months. She's worked very hard and has a total of 15 years in customer service experience, and we're gonna benefit from all that in her new position as lead utility billing clerk. We have three new Team Cal members. Joel Ortiz is an environmental services tech. Manuel Morales and Kerry Solito are both new telecommunications. And I just wanna brag on our telecommunicator work group for a second. That group unfortunately is not full, but at last count, there were only three vacancies in our telecommunicator work group. And if you know, ran the news, the other telecommunicator work groups, other agencies and municipalities all around the state and the country, they're not so lucky. So I want my hats off, go off to the leadership in our telecommunicator group, as well as our police department leadership, and your support as well for, for allowing. police department leadership and your support as well for, for allowing that to be so successful. Here comes the kind of sad part. So as supervisors, you know, we, we have, we bring people into our family and as supervisors, it's our job to help them grow. And if they can't continue to grow internally, then we prepare them for their next step. So I want Kaylee to come up here for a second. Kaylee's been here for six years at our IT department. I remember when we were interviewing for the position, Kaylee presented this really quiet confidence that it didn't matter what her IT skills were, which were considerable, but just the quiet confidence that she brought into the room made her an easy hire. That's why it makes it so hard to tell her bye. Kaylee's going to be taking advantage of a lot of her other skills, continuing her IT work, traveling around the country and the world, doing her own business, her own thing. We're going to miss her terribly. And I just wanted to let the council know how much we appreciate her and give you an opportunity to say anything you want to her.
Councilmember Floris Kales?
I just want to say thank you. Six years is a long time with the city in general, but thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
I just, I'm sorry. Wanted to wish you the best on whatever you're doing next. And we appreciate the service you provided to Kyle. Thank you so much.
Yes, I want to say the same thing, Kaylee. Thank you for all the work dedication that you provided the city and for helping us through many of these events. Thank you.
Councilmember Heiser?
Well, thank you very much. What is coming next? If you're able to talk about it, give yourself a plug.
Well, I'm going to be starting a social media management company called Comment Strike Socials. And I'm going to be working fully remote. I have plans to travel to a couple different states to see if maybe there's somewhere else I'd want to put roots down. So, yeah.
That's awesome. Best of luck with that.
Yes. Thank you so much for, for all the work that you did here in the city. I did see you out there a lot during volunteering with Christmas organizations and all that. And so I just want to wish you the best and for your exciting career. And I just want to say thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kaylee. Best of luck. That's what I add. This is what I get for saying that our IT work group was full last, last meeting. So Tim Cropley. He had to leave? So Tim, Tim Cropley's been our facility manager since 2014. He, he's been the guy that you can call me, anybody call. And if something's not working right, he's the guy that got it fixed. He's made sure that, before Tim got here, we didn't really have a preventive maintenance program. Now we do. We're going to miss Tim terribly. He's, he's not retiring, but he's moving his family to his home state of Maine. And we're going to miss him a lot. And we wish him the best. And I don't know if we can replace Tim, but we can replace that position. We already have that position posted and applicants and hope to be interviewing next week.
Anybody would like to say anything?
Yes.
Floris Kales?
Um, what a total bummer. That's, it's one thing, like, it's, it's just tough to see people go. And so I wished him the best. It's exciting for him that he gets to move, I wouldn't say to Maine, that's not exciting because it's really cold, but you know, to have that opportunity to, to go somewhere else as Kaylee did, I think that's amazing, especially if he had the ability to do it. I say, go for it. But they will both be missed.
Yes, they will.
Thank you, Tim, for all your hard work here at the city. You're going to be missed as well. And thank you for your contributions. Does anybody else would like to say anything? Okay.
All right, Mayor Council, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the, on the agenda item is the CFP Road Projects and Consent Presentations. And then follow that before that will be the agenda order.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council Members. Leon Barbas, City Engineer. We'll start off La Verde Park. It's about 88% complete. They're working on irrigation lines, electrical, installing some boulders at the playground, and they're doing some dirt work and landscaping. They're still setting limestone blocks around the reflecting pool. They're still installing the decomposed granite in the dog park and installing on some fencing in that area also. The limestone installation is being done in the kids area. And they're working on the LED lighting at the bridge. They have completed the Corten Steel Wall that's on the north side footer, and they have installed the playground, poured in place. If you didn't know what P stands for, it's poured in place. It's rubber safety surface. They're waiting for final approval on that. As you can tell, the date on that one has slipped to June of 2023. I think Jerry, you wanted to talk a bit more about this dedication element. This is item number 11, I believe.
Mayor Council, once again Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager for the record. Number 11 on your consent agenda is to approve a contract for $38,000 and change for the like Verde dedication element. This is a part of this project that we actually started looking at dedication elements at the end of last summer. And with all the problems that we were having with Stoddard and this project, the dedication element kind of, kind of moved down the priority list. We were able to pick it up earlier this year and, and be able to get bids, find somebody that can actually build this element. All the backup, all the material about this element is in your backup. This was actually one of three designs that Lionheart brought in front of us. And this easily was the one that met the criteria of what we wanted for the park, a gold standard dedication element that reflected the, what we wanted the park to be. It's made out of limestone, which is what we have underground in this area that feeds the aquifer. There's lots of water features in the park. This dedication element is kind of internally titled Recharge because it has a water feature in it that replicates water going through the limestone into the aquifer to recharge the aquifer. It's also a place where people can sit and recharge while they enjoy the park. So I'm able to answer any questions you have about this element or the project before we get to the consent agenda or, or at the consent agenda, whatever the council's desire is.
Does anybody have any questions referencing this item right now?
Yeah, I'm going to actually pull this for discussion.
Okay.
All right.
The next project is the Public Safety Center. It's about 89% complete. They're working on the final paint. They poured the exterior brick area. The evidence lockers have been installed. They're installing the brick for the perimeter wall. Flooring and carpet on Level 2 is being done. Millwork at Level 1 and 2 is also being done. They're also installing the east elevator. And the completion date is, is at May of 2023. That's this month. Downtown relocation of overhead lines. We finally got response from Spectrum. They're telling us they're going to start on May 17th. It should take them two to three days to get their work done. And then we can start removing those communication lines and then eventually removing those poles that are out there. Old Post Road, the drainage is completed, asphalt's completed. The county's complete with their portion of the project. We will be having a walkthrough and we're going to be setting the date and time later, probably next week. Indian Paintbrush Lift Station, we're about 56% complete. This project's going, slowed down a little bit, but it's still moving forward. The odor control system has been received. That's that item that's on your right. That's what it looks like on the ground, but that's going to be installed as part of our monitoring system. The wet wheel coatings will be completed this week, and they're working on underground electrical conduits and pump installations. Consent agenda items, we just, just talked about, let's talk about item number 13. This is the stateside right-of-way services. There's still eight easements we need to get started with the Center Street Village Phase 2 project. So this is a recommendation for stateside services to do the acquisition of those eight easements. Consent agenda item number 14, that's accepting Crosswind Subdivision Phase 6A. On this particular item, council, I won't hesitate and tell you that I messed up on this one. If you remember, back on April 4th, we set a hearing for May 16th. And we're supposed to post the notice in the free press for 30 days. And guess what? We don't normally do this process in our department, so I missed the date. And so now we have to reset that meeting. So we have, we're resetting it for June the 20th of 2023. And that's when we'll bring the impact fee changes back to council for the hearing. Any questions?
Any questions for Leon? Councilmember Floris Kales?
Thank you. My only question is for agenda item 13 regarding stateside right-of-way services. It just says for acquisition of easements for the Center Street Village. Is that the cost to obtain the easements or is that the cost to hire a project manager so they could obtain and work with the residents to get the easements?
Stateside Right-of-Services will be providing service to acquire those easements for us.
So the, the cost of the easements will be additional?
That will be additional. But council member, I'm expecting those to be dedicated. That line needs to be upgraded. And most of those owners there know that line needs to be upgraded. So I'm really expecting those to be dedicated. But things happen. Things can change.
Okay. So I know in the past, staff, and I'm not saying we have enough staff to do this, but staff has obtained the easements? They've gone out and worked with the residents? Is there...
In some cases, we've done that, but it's on the, for the very simple acquisitions that we know we're not going to have many major issues with. But typically, we do award that, those projects to, Stateside did the easements for Elliott Ranch, for example. They also did the acquisition for the Southside Project. So did all those acquisitions. In some cases, if we know the owners, we will work with them. For example, some of the easements on the Button Creek Interceptor Project, I've visited with the owners and we acquired those easements. But I did have help from a, a local person that does acquisitions also. So we do get heavily involved.
Okay. I guess my ultimate question would eventually was going to be, is it, does it make more sense just to hire staff in the long run? And, and that way we have them on hand and they could do other projects. But with this, you know, specialized in obtaining easements, maybe even short-term, five years, you know, just throughout the city's growth?
Previous city I worked on, we had a full-time staff. That's all we did. That's, that's correct. It depends on how many easements. For example, the road bond projects coming up, that would be a possibility. Yes, it could be a possible solution to, to car and staff to do that in-house.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question too, Leon. The width of the easements that we're obtaining, are they 20 feet for wastewater or 10 feet right-of-ways? What, how much are we pulling out of easements?
Typically, we get about 15 feet for a line that's fairly shallow, say 10 feet or less. It's not, it's only about 10 feet deep. As the line gets deeper, then we try to widen. For example, if the line is 20 feet deep, we're going to go to about at least 20 feet. Obviously, our Public Works Department would like 100 feet or more, but we just don't really go that way. So we'll try to get what's equal to the depth of the line. So typically, we start off with 15 feet. That's the minimum that we need to at least get a crew in there to be able to work on that line. Now, as, again, as the line gets deeper, then yes, we try to get for a wider easement. We also need construction easements in some cases just so we can work better in that area, have more room to work in.
And what about the utility easements? Are they also in parallel with our 15-feet easements?
That, that is a easement. The utility easement is a 15-foot that we asked for.
Okay. Thank you, Leon.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Shepard Parson?
So just to make sure, item 16 will be postponed until June 20th?
That's correct.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, next up, we're going to have the, before we deal with consent agenda, we're going to go with the agenda order. So we'll go ahead and pull first, Councilmember Floris Kales and Mayor Pro Tem's item, item number 27. That will be agenda item discussion of the limestone development agreement, including amendments located within the terms for including but not limited to the city's plan of action for six residential lots located in Quail Ridge.
All right, thank you. I'd like to start by apologizing to my residents for any added stress this situation has caused. I truly believe none of us wanted to be burdensome, but the truth is, what, what did we expect? I also want to thank Councilmember Tobias for our many thoughtful conversations and for his sponsorship of this item. I want to state that my choice is also to sponsor this item. My, my choice to sponsor this item comes from doing what accords with my priorities and values and nothing more. What I want to get out of this discussion is an idea from staff, from myself and my residents, as to what the next steps will be and what the process will look like from here. For example, who will be reaching out to them and what are the timeframes they can expect. I understand there is a lot of uncertainty among council, staff, and developers, but no one suffers more from that uncertainty than the residents who are affected. As for lessons learned and for future discussions amongst council, I would like to share my thoughts on the idea of unity. I would like to talk about the importance of sincere unity and not forced unity derived from adverse reactions from decisions made. Instead, I'd like to see unity during the decision-making process. This will show our residents that despite our differences, we can and will work together in their best interest. And so my first question is going to be, do, is there a plan that we can even discuss?
Mayor Council Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager for the record. We did have a meeting today with our land acquisition agents and developer, Meritage. And we talked through the, what the basic process usually is. But we also are ready to begin this process as early as tomorrow morning. So, and we have representatives from stateside here to help answer any questions, if you have questions for them. The first part of the process, which typically starts once the financing has been secured and obtained, is, is that you, that's when you reach out to the homeowners. Typically, it's done with land acquisition agents going to the home to schedule an interview. But we felt it would be better to send a letter introducing the agents and letting the residents know what to expect when that person comes to your home. And then they would reach out and make an appointment to the homeowners that would be affected. And then from there, you go into interviews with those homeowners about what they would foresee, where they would like to go, how they like to be treated, what their concerns are. And, and we've been very clear in our conversations with everybody involved in this process, that it's the council's direction, that these homeowners be treated fairly and with respect, and that we understand the, the situation that we're putting them in. And, and then as you go through the process, you get more into detail about what, what the process is going to be, what the outcomes are going to be. And we have folks here that can, that do this for a living that can go into more detail. But like I said, we do have a process in place. We're ready to begin that process as early as in the morning, if that's council's desire and direction.
Okay. I am the co-sponsor of this item. And when I found out about this even further was obviously due to a news article that came out in the Community Impact. And I was reached out by residents. That was just all. I know we had discussions about the direction of what we were going to do. It just was very, very, and I'm going to use the word infuriating, knowing that nothing was done from the beginning. These are people, as this item has said, have lived here for many, many years. And for us to not reach out in the way we did, it's not like us. And so with that, again, I want to be able to see a plan in place because this is just the beginning of other situations we might be in. And the reason why I say this is because we just passed a 2022 road bond to where we're going to have some engineering studies being done. We're going to have areas to where we may have to look at expanding some of these roadways to where we may need to reach out to property owners to say, we're going to possibly, or we might need some extra space, some more roadway, uh, right-of-ways. And we've got to have a policy and a procedure in place to notify our residents. And it's the right thing to do. And as much as I was very upset that things didn't follow through, I understand that we've got to move forward on this. And we need to continue to work with these residents, not only just the ones that could be, the six that could be impacted, but the entire neighborhood. And so on that note, I just want to say, as council member and your acting Mayor Pro Tem, to the residents at Quail Ridge, all of you, I deeply apologize. I apologize to all of you for us not being forthcoming and notifying you in a proper manner. The added stress, as Councilmember Floris Kales said, did not do any good. We as a city, as a whole... We as a city as a whole have to do better. We have to do better, especially when it comes to our residents that have been here for many, many years before us. I understand that we're all sometimes about progress, but that's why I always bring back the preservation part of it all. We've got to preserve the history, the traditions, and not only that, the people that have lived here for many years and respect them and respect their property. So with that, if there's a plan that's being in place, I'd like to be able to see what we can do, bringing something forward. But before I do that, I'd see, I'd like to see if there's anybody on council on the dais that would like to say anything referencing this agenda item. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So I feel like the the feeling is pretty the same across the board in here. I I know that this discussion has been taking place for for quite a while, because I remember being brand new in council when we started talking about the the possibility of having this road construction and what it could take to to get that done. So what I hated to see is that whoever lives in those lots gets to know what's happening because the newspaper reached out to them before we did. It's really what what causes me the most stress. I I wish that I, we would have come up with a better plan to to talk to these residents, you know, before, having a plan before taking that vote. So I'm looking forward to see how we can make it right to them. If there is any way that we can get involved, I'll be happy to do that, just so they know that none of this was done with the intention of like, hey, we want to just kick you out of your houses and we don't care where you go. Because that's not, not even close to what the discussion was. So those are my thoughts.
I. Councilmember Tsuganika.
Yes, I also was just kind of surprised that the information came out in the paper. But it's, I think we just need to do a better job with the positives and the negatives. How, what are these, what are the residents in this community? How's this going to be maybe beneficial for the residents living there? What are going to be the negatives? And why is the road, why does it have to be through these six homes? I don't, I don't think I ever got an answer for that. Was that because that's the straightest path to go forth? Is there any other option of going around to avoid imminent domain? Jerry?
I don't believe that there is, but I don't have the answer for why there is not another place for that road. And I can get that answer for you.
You said you had somebody here from the company themselves?
Yes, sir. I have Sean Jackson here with Stateside Acquisition Services, as well as Danielle Donnelly is online, if you'd like to speak with them.
Okay. Do you like to come up, sir?
Good evening. How are you all?
Yes. So you're part of the engineering services, correct?
No, sir. We are just the acquisition. So I'm the acquisition project manager for any kind of the acquisitions. And then we've also got a relocation specialist that's online. Her name is Danielle cannot make it. So it's Brianna, Brianna Miller.
Okay. So what would be your role in this?
We would be the ones reaching out and talking to the landowners on the city's behalf.
Okay. Have y'all thought of any ideas right off the bat? How you would go forward on this? Because I know this has been talked about for almost a year now.
Yes.
And so it's, this is kind of why it's very disturbing on our end. And so now it's like we're starting from from scratch when everything's been said and done.
Okay. Yeah, we have a bullet pointed list on how the acquisition process would work and how we dual path that with the relocation process.
Okay.
May I? Yes, that's what I would like to know too, how the process goes, because I would hate for us, like, we just took the vote and I don't think we quite understand how the process goes. And and maybe that's where the miscommunication happened.
I think a lot of the thing is, is right off the bat, again, you know, we can go on and on that, you know, these these residents, even the entire neighborhood was never notified, period. And that's the frustrating part. I I think now we're at the point to where, okay, it's been done and we got to figure out, as a city now going forward, how how are we going to help these residents in in this situation? And I think that's kind of what we're trying to get at, is trying to understand what process would you start going forward as far as working with these residents on that end, since it's it's I guess I'm trying to explain it correctly. It just, what's, how does this process going to work step by step?
Okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to work with the city staff and working on an introductory letter explaining the project, explaining some of the the details on what's going to happen with the property as much as, and I don't know exactly all the engineering side of what's been done. So whatever we can explain to them in the introductory letter, then that's what we'll do. We'll send the introductory letters out. We'll send them usually by regular mail. We send them by certified mail. We'll send them FedEx, UPS. However, we'll send as many packets as we need to make sure that the landowners get that, the the information. Once they get the information, we've asked inside that letter if they would reach out to us so we can start setting up meetings with these folks. You know, trying to get, I think we need to get surveyors on the property. We need to get appraisers on the property. So once we get the introduction done, then we come back and we ask for a right-of-entry to get on the property, to do these survey work, the appraisals, stuff like that. If there's any engineering or design that needs to be done, get those those folks out there as well. And once we get to that.
No, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Once we, once we get to that point, then we would have the surveys come in, we would have the appraisals come in, and then we would put our packets together for, we would give those to staff. Staff, I'm guessing, present those to you guys for approval. As we're, as we're doing this, the relocation agent, so there's a, we have to separate these. So you have an acquisition side to things and you have a relocation side to things. So as the acquisition is happening and I'm working on the acquisition services, we also have the relocation agent talking to the folks, doing the interviews with the folks, seeing what they what they qualify for, all the benefits that they're going to to receive. And it's a, that's a very long process that if you've got pointed questions about that, I could get Brianna on. I do not, I'm not a relocation specialist. I'm the acquisition specialist. So if you had those pointed questions, then I could get her on.
Yes, if if so, because again, we have residents right now that live in this subdivision that are watching us. So as much information that you guys can give us right now, that is kind of why we have this on the agenda.
Okay.
Because again, this is the first time that these residents are actually hearing this.
Okay. So once we, once we get to the point where we have the offers approved by city council, then we actually can mail those offers out to the landowners. Then we try to set up meetings again with the landowners to talk about the offer, talk about the, what's going to happen, you know, with the land and stuff like that. Once we hopefully can come to some kind of arrangement, there may be a counter that they they come back with. We'll present that to staff, and I'm guessing staff will present that to you guys, and then we could go through the process of that. Once we get done with that, then we start going, we get inside documents and stuff like that, and then we go to title company and try to get everything closed. So as we're, we're doing that, then Brianna, do you want to jump on and talk about the relocation process?
I wanted to ask if the developers are going to pay the compensation to the residents? Or is this going to be the city that will pay the compensation for the road to obtain the? It'll come out of the?
It's included in the financing.
From the developer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying this, any relocation costs will come from the developer? Go ahead, ma'am. You're online.
So as Sean was saying, we try to get involved in the process as early as possible so that way we have the opportunity to speak with those who are being affected by the project. Whenever the, we first meet with our negotiators and we look at the project itself so that we can start planning if we see any additional needs that may be there. Something as simple as passing by on the street and we see there's a handicap accessible ramp. We know that that displaces, we call people who are being relocated, that they're going to need additional items on their replacement home. And so we start planning for items like that in the beginning before we're even able to make it onto the property to do things like the survey and the appraisal. Whenever the appraisers are on site, we meet on site with the appraiser, the negotiator, as well as the landowners so that way we can understand how these displaces are utilizing the property and we can make sure that we address those issues and concerns whenever we do what we call a comparable search. So if someone is currently living in a home, we have to issue what's called a notice of eligibility. Within that notice of eligibility, we find things that are, we find homes that are comparable is the wording used to what they're currently in, things similar to square footage, bedroom count, et cetera. The homes that we find have to also be what's called decent, safe, and sanitary, which means that there's, it holds temperature, no gaping holes in the walls, things of basic integrity of a home. And we also have to make sure that the homes that we are comping them to are will also accommodate their household composition. So these are all things that we're taking note of while we're doing our initial interview with the appraisal on site. We take the time and we're, we speak with our displaces about their needs and their wants as well as their feelings about things, because as you said, hearing about a project affecting your family and being required to move somewhere else is a big deal, especially whenever you've laid down roots in a place. And the one thing I'll boast a bit about our company is that we've had the opportunity to do things that's called environmental justice. And that's where we've been brought in on different projects specifically to do more of the handholding and explaining. And that has allowed us to also incorporate those things in our regular relocations. Things like getting information to displaces about whether approving their new home to help with utility costs, showing them how and making sure their homes are home-stated in order to decrease taxes. And many things of that nature. So once we've completed our initial interview and we've received a draft copy of the appraisal, at that time, we'll conduct our eligibility study, those comparables, in order to calculate a maximum benefit. The important thing about the maximum benefit is we do not tell people where they can move to. They can move anywhere they desire. Our purpose of that eligibility is solely to calculate their maximum relocation entitlement. And there are different levels of entitlement. You have entitlements for residential tenants. You have different entitlements for residential owners. If it's just a personal property that we're needing to move or even if there's a business that may be within the home that's affected. Once we issue those notices of eligibility, those will outline all the benefits that each person or each household, business, et cetera, is entitled to. We will present that notice of eligibility at the same time as the negotiators are presenting their offer letters. And we then continue to discuss and talk to the displaces to help them move through the process, explaining those benefits, how they are able to utilize and spend those benefits, as well as looking for a replacement home, getting them in contact with realtors if necessary. If they want to have a mortgage company or if they had one before and they're needing a new one. Whatever their needs are for this process, we are there to hold their hand and walk them through it so that they understand not just what they're entitled to, but how they can get those benefits. Once they've selected a replacement home and they've also come to an agreement with the city as far as the acquisition cost, we try to close on the same day for both the displacement, the property that's being acquired, as well as the replacement. At that time, they'll be issued what's called a 30-day letter telling them they have 30 days now that the city owns the property for their moving. There are multiple options for them. They can utilize a commercial mover. They can move themselves. And like I said, throughout the process, we will check in with them to see what their needs are and which options will best suit them. The people affected by the project are really in the driver's seat the whole way through. Our job in relocation is solely to explain their options and help them sort through what's going to work best for them in their situations. Once they have obtained a replacement home and closed on it, we will help them facilitate the move. We can be there during the move, doing what we call a move monitoring. Once everything has been vacated, we'll do a vacancy inspection. We'll go through and make sure all of their personal property, et cetera, has been removed, have them sign off in agreement. We'll provide that to the city so that they know that that parcel in particular is ready to move forward in the process. Stateside's role is to make sure that we're in compliance with all the regulations we're required to and provide that information to the city, as well as help pay those individuals their reimbursements and/or advance costs where necessary. Once the displaces have received all of their claims on the relocation side and they've closed with the city, then we will provide the city with closeout files with all the information obtained during the process.
Councilmember Bear Heiser.
I know that was a lot of information.
Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah, thank you for all that information. Just a question to both of you. What are some of the biggest challenges that you face when going through acquisition and also relocation? So that we, on our side, know, can anticipate potential hiccups and and find some areas where we might need to be prepared?
On the acquisition side, it usually comes down to money. We're, we're here, they're here, and just trying to find that middle ground. That's 99% of it.
And how do you find that middle ground?
For relo-
That's why we have-
For relocation, we, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, Brianna. That's why we have a third-party appraiser appraise the property. And then what we try to do is if I work with the the landowners on, if they've got counters and stuff like that, then I just try to show them, you know, this is how we need to do it and this is how we need to do it properly. So if you, if it, if it's justified, then it'll get approved. If it's not, then, you know, if we're not, if we're, you know, comparing apples to apples, then I think we can all agree to, if we're comparing apples to oranges, then that's where the the problem comes in. So that's where I need to do my my diligence on my side to make sure that we're doing the apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
Councilmember Floris Kales?
Yes, go ahead, Brianna.
So for relocation, the two biggest obstacles that we encourage, people don't want to leave their homes. Obviously, they have ties and memories, et cetera. And then on occasion, there is the wanting. So whenever they're looking for a replacement home, you know, we all, when we were looking for a new place, we have these wants. And sometimes what's available on the market, it doesn't always fill all of our wants. So we do work with displaces to make sure they get as many of their wants as they want, by also making sure that they have all their needs. In special circumstances, you do have people who are needing like handicap accessible items, and those are things that can be taken care of under relocation as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask your name too? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it in the-
It's Sean Jackson.
Sean Jackson, thank you very much. Can you explain to me what you meant when you said comparing apples to apples?
So sometimes when I get a counter back from someone, they will, if we're looking at one-acre tracts, then we need to look at comparables for one-acre tracts, not for a lot that's, you know, maybe a quarter of an acre or something like that. So we need to to make sure that we're looking at the same things. That way, whenever we're looking at the comparables, the solds, that we have the apples to apples.
Okay, that's going to be one of my biggest fears, because I looked up the value of all those homes and one is worth $30,000 and one is worth $90,000. So there's no way we can compare apples to apples and get them anything comparable in the state of Texas.
The, that's where the- The, that's where the appraiser comes in. So, and, so the appraiser comes in, and he appraises that property. But also the relocation process, and Brianna, you're going to have to explain this, where we're lacking in the acquisition side, that's where the relocation side picks up, and benefits start kicking in on that side.
Okay.
So in your example, where yours...
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a little lag online. Would you like to go? Would you like me to explain?
No, go ahead.
So in your example, how you have a home that's worth $30,000 right next door to a home that's worth $90,000. Obviously, typically, that disparity may be because of square footage, it may be because of bedroom count, bathroom count, et cetera. In relocation, each of those is looked at uniquely, and what the necessities are of that household. So in the home that's worth $30,000, it may have a slightly smaller square footage, and it may be, for example, a two-bedroom, one-bath. In relocation, like you said, you can't go out and find a two-bedroom, one-bath for $30,000 typically. Whenever we go and look at those comparables, we are looking for something that's similar in square footage, bedroom count, bathroom count, et cetera. And let's say, currently on the market, something like that is running about $100,000. Relocation on that notice of eligibility is going to tell you that relocation can provide up to an additional $70,000 to make up for that gap. So if you agree to the $30,000 in acquisition, and you purchase a home for that $100,000, relocation will provide that additional $70,000. Similarly, the home that's worth $90,000 may have a larger square footage, it may be a four-bedroom, two-bath home. When relocation goes and looks for comparables, we're looking for a home with similar better square footage, as well as that four-bedroom and two-bath. And that comparable home may be $150,000. So then relocation could then step in, and if you agree to that acquisition price, purchase a home for that $150,000, relocation will be able to contribute the difference.
Okay, you mentioned you were going to look at their homes, and they had, you had to review it being decent, safe, and sanitary. In this area, you may find a deficit in some of that. And so how does that affect the process?
It may make us work a little bit harder in order to find ones that are decent, safe, and sanitary. There are also caveats in our regulations that would allow for us to do some rehabs to homes if necessary. We'll look at the market, and that will help us determine what will be the best path forward. And of course, we'll communicate that with our associates at the city as we go forward.
Okay, just have one more question for Paige, and that's, this area, Limestone, is in a TERS. So will the relocation cost be included in that TERS debt?
I will pull up the agreement to confirm, but it's, the development agreement provides that those relocation expenses are eligible for reimbursement from the TERS, is my understanding, but let me double check.
So essentially, it could be charged to the TERS?
Let me...
Okay.
Pull up that document.
Anybody else? Okay, so I guess the, what would be the plan going forward, Jerry?
Can I end with one thing on my side?
Yes, go ahead.
I know this is a sensitive subject, especially with the city and the residents and stuff like that. One thing that we do at stateside is, we try to treat people the way we want to be treated. So I don't think you're going to have any problems with the way we're going to be out there and dealing with these folks on y'all's behalf. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, because you're right, because there's people that have been out there for almost 20, 30 years, and a lot of them are retired, and they're elderly. And so for them to, all of a sudden, get a notification, especially in the newspaper, "Hey, guess what? You know, we're coming for your house," that's very unsettling. And it's very disturbing for me, and it's heartbreaking. And so, you know, we're in this situation now, and so it's a matter of now, how can we move forward in this in a very positive light to where, you know, again, it's not going to take away a lot of the sentimental values that these people have, because again, they've lived there for so long, and we've got to respect that. So that leads up to where we're going forward, Jerry, because what's going to be the directive on this? And go ahead, Councilman Zuniga.
You also have a question. When you look at homes that are for sale, there's an appraised value, and then there's a listing, there's a listing. And in many cases, that listing is way over the appraised value. So why would we not give these residents that opportunity to pick their price, their listing price, and then we have to go off of that?
Are you talking about, like, county appraisal?
Right, so we're trying to go the appraised value, do the three comps, but that's not really how it works, because when you are trying to sell your home, you list it, and you can put any number you want as you're listing, and now it's up to a buyer if they want to give you that number. So I don't want to take that away from these residents. They should have the opportunity to have a list, a listing that they want.
So the appraiser, when they look at their, when they do the appraisal, they don't go off of county appraisal numbers or anything like that. They find homes that are similar in square footage, rooms, bathrooms, all that stuff, and lot size, all that good stuff, and they find solds for that, and that's where you come up with your appraised value.
Sure, but, like I said, it's going to be the seller's market in this case. They have the, they should have the upper hand in the negotiations with you guys, or with whatever we come up with.
I don't know how to really address that, other than when...
It seems like we're not giving them the upper hand, when we're looking for three low comps that we can find, and, okay, we're going to adjust for moving and relocations, but that's not, that's not how I would want to sell my property to somebody.
The appraiser doesn't look for low comps and just that. I mean, they're looking at just comps across the board.
It's the apples-to-apples comparison that they were giving before. This isn't an attempt to lowball anybody.
Right, and that's...
This is an attempt for, to make people whole based on what's lost, looking at comparisons in the area. And I think that's the best thing. I mean, none of us up here are experts on this matter, and that's why we're asking the questions. So I think that we should use this as an opportunity to take what we've learned, and to allow staff to try to put together the plan, working with these agents here, and learn from what's happened previously, and just try to do better next time.
Paige, yes, and Paige?
I was going to answer Councilmember Floris.
If I may switch to that for a moment. I think you guys both presented very good points on that, and yes, as a seller of your home, you would be able to list it for any price you wanted. But as the other gentleman was saying, and I apologize, I can't see names, you would do that based on what is currently on the market, or what things have been selling for. So on the appraisal side of it, on the acquisition side, we're doing the same thing. We're looking for similar properties, what they have been selling for, and then that is what the acquisition offer is. And like Sean said earlier, if someone is not in agreement with it, if they believe that this, my home is worth more because I have marble countertops or whatever that may be, that's information that the landowners are able to provide us during their appraisal process, so the appraisers can consider that. And then they have another opportunity later on with the negotiators to have that dialogue and request additional compensation for those items.
Right, so I just want to make sure the table's always open. It's not going to be a one-deal done with these residents.
No, I mean, at the end of the day, you guys are the ones that are going to decide, you know, price, and decide if somebody counters, then you're going to decide that, not us. We don't, we don't do those things. We just provide you the information so you can make the best decision for the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
Yeah, just piggybacking off of what Councilmember Zuniga said, I think what's important is to make sure that anytime there's a challenge, not to be afraid to bring it back to us, because I know not every city is as thoughtful to the residents as we are, but we kind of recognize the history of Kyle and that background, and for that reason, I think we would all maybe be a little bit more open to doing things that we would not normally do, just in regards to making sure that we take care of our residents. So my ask would be, anytime you feel like there's something that's too big and that we wouldn't do, that you presented it to us anyways, and allow us the opportunity to talk about it, and then make that decision collectively.
Of course, yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Paige?
I just wanted to respond more accurately to your question. In the development agreement, it says that the developer can seek reimbursement of the eligible fees that they pay from the PID bonds, but it has to be eligible. And if they're not eligible, under the tests that govern PID bonds and what can be paid from those, the developer can seek reimbursement from the TERS.
Okay, and so we would have to ask our bond counsel whether or not this is something that could be added to the PID, which I...
That gets addressed. You get more detail and more information as you get closer to preparing the service and assessment plan and putting all those costs in there. And so at that time, they'll be able to more specifically identify what's eligible for reimbursement from the PID, and what is eligible for reimbursement from the TERS. And those are all governed by the statutes, and whether the improvement confers a benefit on the limestone development, or the, yeah, the development.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hendricks. Where are we at on this?
Based on what I'm hearing from council, I think sooner is better than later, so we will proceed in the morning to start developing, moving forward this process. We've already began a draft of the introductory letter that was discussed earlier. We'll finalize that draft. We'll also send the council a timeline on when each step in this timeline is anticipated to take place, and as those steps take place, we will send notifications to you, keep you fully apprised of where we are in the process.
Thank you.
With that, do we need to make a motion with that, or is that going to be a clear directive from council?
I just wanted to make one request.
Go ahead.
If we could look for a contingency Plan B, if it doesn't have to go through those six homes, because that's one big question that I get from everyone.
I have the answer to your question. If we move that road any further east, then it would be in San Marcos jurisdiction, so it can't be moved east.
Have we thought about working with San Marcos?
We're trying to look at different options.
Sure, I will explore that.
I want to have a good answer for my, for the residents that are getting upset, and tell them this is why the road is here, and it wasn't because this was the easiest path, or maybe it's cost-effective, maybe it's a city rule, and that's, this affects the TERS. I want to have the facts with that.
We'll provide to you a staff report on the issues involved moving that road to the east.
Can we also see if we can move it to the west, or is that not possible?
If you move it west, you're moving it more into the neighborhood.
Oh, to the, okay.
So, can, so the directive would be to go ahead and, go ahead and begin the process to notify the residents appropriately.
Sure.
But also reach out to the city of San Marcos to see if there's a way to where they could be able to assist us with that, to where if we have to go with Plan B, where we're not able to go through there, we can work something out with them as well.
Sure.
Okay.
You can say that as a motion.
Yes, as a motion. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to follow up with the residents at Limestone, at Quail Ridge, and also to work with the city of San Marcos of an alternate route for the road that would go through.
Second.
Okay, there's motion made by myself, Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for coming.
The agenda item is, again, we're still with the agenda orders, so we're going to go ahead and bring Mr. Zuniga, Councilman Zuniga's items, number 29 and 30.
I didn't mean to bring them up this early.
I said he, yeah, no, no, he was going to move them, he was going to move his items on top of our presentation that we are postponing, so it will remain the same.
So...
It remains the same.
Remains the same, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're going on to consent, okay?
Can I ask why it's being postponed?
Because we have a meeting with the trail group, and with Parks in order to do a recap.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent agenda items. Is there anybody besides number 11 that wants an item to be pulled?
I wanted to add a question.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion, if there is none, to approve agenda items 12 through 18.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion to approve consent agendas 12 through 18 by Councilmember Floris Cale, and second by Councilmember Parsley.
With 16 being postponed, right?
With 16 being postponed, yes.
Can I add a question about 17, 18?
Okay, so do you want to pull those?
Just to ask the chief a question.
Okay, so before we take the vote, let's go ahead and have the discussion between items number 17 and 18. Councilmember Zuniga.
Oh, please.
Yes, sir, good evening. I'm Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record.
Yeah, my only question about 17, 18, it's great, I'm happy to see that we're donating the tasers. What is the cost of a taser, just so the residents know?
Brand-new, they can be about $800. These are certainly used in the outdated model, but when we purchase them brand-new, they're roughly about $800 when we get the bundle pack.
So that's great, that we're giving them, these are the older version, and we've upgraded to newer, safer, more easier to use, I guess.
Yes, sir, they have different features, and they upgrade them as part of our contract that you approve in the budget. So every so many years, they're going to replace those with the newer model, the latest, greatest technology, and then that's, it's part of the agreement that we have, that we get the newer model.
What other types of requests do we get from other closer cities, from our law enforcement supplies?
Generally, we might get a request for maybe an out-of-commission light bar that's no longer in service on one of our vehicles that we have in storage. That's probably the most common.
And I am...
Yeah, I don't even really recall any more than that, maybe just some vehicle equipment stuff, of things that are honestly surplus and trash to us.
Right. So I know that Martinville and Lockhart, they are very, like, understaffed, right? They have fewer officers.
Definitely smaller communities, definitely smaller budgets. I can tell you that we work with both of those departments. Martinville is great. We don't necessarily work with them as often because of their proximity to San Marcos and others. I can tell you that the city of Lockhart and their police department works with us very often and very well, in so much as they have a gun range that they have been very kind to offer to us at no cost, to train our officers at their gun range. Obviously, we don't have our own, so there are times when we need to find one in the region to use. And so they've been giving us that kind of favor for a number of years. We typically try to return the favor and supply firearms instructor for their needs, if and when that comes up. But they've certainly been very good to us as well. And Martinville is certainly a fine police department, too, and they need these for their funding.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great to see that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Floris Cale?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I think it's, I'm huge on recycle, reduce, reuse, and in this case, you guys are reusing. And I go out to Martinville quite a bit, and it's a really sweet town. And so I appreciate that you guys have decided to reuse these and give them to people or police stations that need them. So thank you for that thought.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, so let me go back again to the motion on the table, because I do see that 16 was actually a postponed item. So it was postponed for, I guess there was still some discussion that needed to be done. So I guess we have the motion still for items number 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18? Okay, any other discussions on those items? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item passes six to zero. Okay, now we're bringing agenda item number, consent agenda number 11, Councilman Floris Cale.
Thank you. I've got a few questions. Who am I going to direct these to?
I'll take them.
You'll take them? Okay, go on, here. All right, first of all, thank you for bringing this to us. As a disclosure, my hope was council could have collectively chosen what this monument looked like. I'm not a big fan of the layout or the detail on it, and so I was really disappointed to just look at it and not have a say-so in what was going to be there. just look at it and, and not have a say-so in what was going to be there. My first question is, what names qualified for this document? Because it looks like there's several names, and there's two current standing council members whose names are not on there.
Anybody that was on council, that actively voted on any part of this project, would have their name on the, on the plaque, as well as staff.
All right, there, I'm going to be honest, there's some names that I don't think are appropriate to place on that monument, and I hope that's discussed prior to any kind of finalization.
Sure, we, we can send drafts for all the documents to council for their review, any, and we can have agenda items, discuss those if you wish.
Okay. And is there any way we can look at any other monuments? Because again, I'm not a fan of, of the way this one looks at all, and I, you know, there's a story written on there, and before that's finalized, I would like to read that story to, you know, kind of get a, some kind of feedback from council. I'm not sure who provided that information, but I think it should be collectively as council at least reviewed.
All right, yeah, all, anything involving text will be sent to council in advance. It can be discussed at a council meeting if you wish. So, if you'll allow me to share my screen, I can actually walk you through the, the other designs that were presented by Lionheart, and, and the work group that was reviewing those picked this one hands down over those, but let me see if I can get that up here for you.
And Councilmember Floris Cale, again, just a little bit of history of a lot of these projects, these legacy projects, they used to call them. They were all still designed by a task force, by three council members at the time that came up with these concepts and came up with that. So these were, were voted in as far as the design concepts before, years, before a lot of us were on council, but I understand what you're trying to get at, is that if we're going to finalize any kind of verbiage or any kind of monument, sayings or any quotes that we'd be able to, as this dius, look at it and, and understand what it's all about. Is, is that what we're getting at?
Well, even a task force has the responsibility to come back to the council and present to us what it is they want, and I've been on council since the, the beginning of this park, and I've never seen any of it. And so I think going alongside with items like the public safety center, and I felt like there wasn't a whole lot of council, collective council, like, opinions provided, while we still have the chance to have us all have, you know, an opinion in what's going up, I would like to take advantage of that.
Okay. So is that what we're voting on, on this, or it's just the concept itself?
You're, you're voting on the, the contract to, to build and install this, this element?
Okay, but as far as the verbiage and anything else that's written as far as the language or the words themselves, whether it's a different phrase-
Although that is still in draft form, and we're still working on it, and when we reach our final draft form, we can bring that back to council, if that's your desire.
Okay.
Jerry, is it, is the monument, the image that we're looking with the, the two, two stones at angles to each other? Is that the only piece, or is it more than just this piece?
So, I just sent a file, if you can share it, my share screen's not, not working.
I, I, I like it, I think it's beautiful, but, you know me, the price is just the only thing that bothers me, but, but I like it. But how would you prevent kids from walking on top of it if it's this flat surface with the story, nice story of the aquifer on it? Because my kids love jumping around.
I think there's actually a picture in there with somebody sitting on one of them, right?
Yeah, yeah, the-
I'm told you, tell me that.
The element, the element that's in front of you for your consideration that we did the RFP on is called, like I mentioned before, is called Recharge, and it's based on the limestone that exists in this area, the water flows through and recharges our aquifer, but it also is a place for people to sit and reflect and also recharge. So that's what really set this particular element apart.
I, I do think it's pretty. After I review all the backup material, I like the, the monument. Maybe kids need to recharge, too.
Yeah, well, it's finally taken upon it.
If you want me to walk you through the, the two other designs? So go, go back to the beginning if you don't mind.
Can I ask if this went through the Parks Board?
It did not.
Did the Park Department have anything to do with this?
Did not. So if you want to just go through slide by slide real quick? So there's three different things, one's called, I'm not going to say this right, so forgive me, a, a gamma graph, and there's already one of those at Hero's Memorial Park that has a flag that you walk through and it changes. So the second one is called the flipping story, which you have to see to understand. And the second one, and the third one is called recharge, which is one that's in front of you today. If you go one more. This kind of, this language kind of goes through the whole part of the park that we're trying to represent in this design element. If you can go further. That talks about the fault lines, that exists. Next one, this shows, you can see the three different locations for the three different concepts, with the recharge being the concept three that's in the middle lower part of the diagram of the park you see there. If you go further, next slide. So this, this is the thing you walk by and it changes what it says, so if you just slowly go through that, you'll see as you walk through it how it would change and tell the story of the park. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And that's kind of where that would go. What you're looking at is the, I believe, the entertainment pavilion and the restaurants and everything that will be there. So that's option number one, or number two. Number one, number one. Go to the next one. This is called the flipping story. Number two is kind of a mixture of number one and number two. If you go to the next one, you can see it's a similar setup with the limestone, and you can sit on it, and it has the, the boards that you can flip to tell different parts of what you want, different parts of the story, the, the names, et cetera. So that's why it's called the flipping story. If you go to the next one, you can see how you can flip the, the elements of the design to see different parts of, of the design element. Next. And this is the, the recharge. So you can see where you can sit on it. There's a bubbler that's at the top part that goes through the, the channel that's built in there. You can see where the story of La Verde will be on there and where the dedication plaque will be. Next slide. You can see that channels where the water would come through and it would land in that catchment underneath it and be recycled to come through. Next slide. It's a different angle, but we've already discussed. Next slide. And that's where that would go. So those are the three options that were considered by the working group.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
Thank you. If, if possible, I would like this to go back to the parks and the Parks Board. I think it's important that we utilize them every chance we get. I'm not trying to slow anything down, I just, I, I remember complaints previous that our board members didn't necessarily feel like they had been heard, and so finding out that they are not involved in this, I, I guess I'm confused. I know La Verde isn't a TERS, and I know it's in a very specific area, but it's still a park just the same, and it's really important for me to get the feedback from the residents, and we get that ultimately from our board. So I don't know if anybody else would be willing, do they, when's our next board meeting? Does anybody know?
I bet you somebody here does.
Mariana.
May 29th.
Is that too late for everybody?
I'm just wondering if this is going to slow down the opening of La Verde.
Well, La Verde's not even scheduled till June.
But I'm, I'm just wondering if we were to-
Yeah, that would make it kind of tight. You know, everything with this park gets delayed, so that, you know, we're happy to do whatever the council wants.
That's my only concern. Because we have pushed, I know, it's not our fault, you know? La Verde has been pushed so, so much. If we were to go and redesign this, and it's going to probably increase the price, and then it's going to be pushing the opening of the park another two, three months.
Well, we don't know when it's really going to be opened, to be fair anyways. And so is it, I guess the question for me would be, is it worth it to get the residents' feedback?
But would it be the residents' feedback? Would it be the Parks Board? But then, then why did we pay somebody to design this?
But that's, that's a different legit question, but when I say the residents, I talk about our board members because they're who's on the board, and so that's the closest thing we're going to get to our residents' feedback. But to not do it at all, and again, I don't want to, like, hold it up either, had I had, if I had full faith that this would be done in June, I probably would be hesitant to hold off and have it go to the board. Is there any way that the board could have a, a meeting anytime sooner? Okay, if we could have it sooner, would that be helpful to get some feedback? Again, I don't know, it's, it's up to everybody else. I'm just trying to be inclusive and thoughtful.
I, I do think that moving forward, for, for whenever something like this comes again, it would be nice for us to have- For us to give feedback on what we want to see as a monument.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Heiser.
If we're good, let's vote.
Okay. This is, this is to approve the contract for Southwest. Do you have a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah.
I would like to make-
Make a motion to approve the contract for, with Southwest Monument Design, in the amount not to exceed $36,258.29 to fabricate and install the La Verde Park dedication element.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Heiser, second by Councilmember Parsley. Do we have any discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, council.
Passes five to one. Okay, next up on the agenda, we're going now to the-
Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
I've, I've got one point to bring up regarding agenda item number 16. I believe that one was marked as postponed. That isn't, that is a item that needs action taken so that the engineering department can proceed with publishing a notice that needs to be published for the impact fee process to move forward.
Okay, all right.
So has it been posted yet? The, the advertisement?
It has not been posted yet. It will be after approval of this presentation.
Yeah, I think Leon stated that today, when he was giving his presentation.
Oh, I thought he said that it already was posted, and that's why we know, we knew the firm date. So this is going to get posted tomorrow then if we vote on it now?
Okay, all right. Then let's go and bring up item number 16, resetting the date for the public hearing to be held on June the 20th. Required under the chapter 319, 395 in the Texas Local Government Code to consider, discuss, and review the update to the water, wastewater, land assumptions, wastewater capital improvements plan, and imposition updated water and wastewater impacts amount. Anyone want to make a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 16.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made by Councilmember Floris Cale and second by Councilperson Parsley to approve item number 16. We have any discussion on the, on the motion?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I know some residents were wondering about this. How exactly is the impact fee going to affect the regular general household in the area? Is there going to be a percentage increase that they will see on their bill, so they expect it? Thank you, Leon.
Mayor Protem, Council Leon Barba City Engineer. Councilmember, this is an impact fee that's assessed whenever somebody purchases a new water meter or connects to our wastewater system, so the current residents don't see any impact on this fee. Also, it's based on the platting date. The, the date that this is approved, that determines when we charge those fees. So if you plats your property after June the 20th, it's approved by council on that date, you would be required, and you want to buy a five-eighths meter, just the smallest meter, you would have to pay those new impact fees. So it doesn't impact the current residents today.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion passes six to zero. Aye. All right, next item is going to be the consider and possible action. It's going to be agenda item number 19, to consider possible action to authorize the interim city manager to execute a contract with Adora Group in the amount not to exceed $35,780 for the professional services related to accepting HUD entitlement status and the CDBG program. This is Assistant City Manager Amber Smits.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council Amber Smits, Assistant City Manager for the record. I believe I brought this to you a few weeks back for an RFP to select a firm to bring us through the CDBG entitlement process, and we received five proposals, and staff selected our Dura to lead them through this process. We have Molly Quirk with our Dura here tonight if you have any questions about the process. You do have a proposal in your backup documentation that speaks to their outreach plan, which impressed us, and their detailed organization, so I'm open for any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Floris Cale?
I've spoken to Amber about this previously, and I, it states that there's a difference in the price, and it was due to, please remind me, it was-
Due to the analysis to impediments to fair housing, and we had asked our Dura to separate that out, take that out, so it could be paid for at a later point in time once we had the CDBG funding, but it is going to have to be done, and if council decides that they would like to go ahead and do this, it would be for a reduced rate of, it would $10,705 at this point in time, whereas later in the process, it'll be $14,000. Council could go ahead and make that in their motion to get, get that done as well by our Dura.
So yeah, my thought behind that is if it's going to have to be done either way, and if we're going to save $3,700 by doing it now, I think overall, it, it might be a good idea to just pay the $46,485 and just get it done. So I would like to make a motion to amend agenda item 19 and allow not to exceed $46,485.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilmember Floris Cale to increase the order amounts to $46,850.
It's $46,485.
Dollars, and it was seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Zuniga?
So just so the residents understand, this, this proposal through the HUD entitlement status, we are receiving 250, or we're receiving some funds from this program.
Some funds, yes, sir.
240, 250?
Yes, sir. It, it's about $219,000. We don't expect that to increase much, but it's a good start.
And so this 46 will be repaid out of that, right?
Correct, yes.
Just real briefly, if you can explain what the contract would be for, and I did, I did have a conversation with you last year, let's go forth, the, with Commissioner Inglesby about the rental assistance program. I believe you were a part of that group, and you were very, very helpful with that, and so I want to say thank you on that. And how would this impact study, this, this contract help, help with our residents? Just to give somebody an idea what this would be.
So, this, this will initially take in, it will gather public input, and it will speak to some of the weaknesses that we have surrounding housing and infrastructure, access to community facilities. It will identify all of those needs, and it will put it into a plan for the city. And then as the city council so desires, we'll begin executing on the strategies identified in that plan and as funding's available.
Okay, so how, would, would any kind of rental assistance programs be part of that or included in this process, or is that- Or is that, that, that's how I was familiar with you on that end. Just wanted to get an idea of what, what your group would be going to help an out with.
Molly Quark with our Dura for the record. Thank you, guys, for having me here tonight. We're really excited to, to work with you. And yes, we, we are the, the group that's helping administer all the ARPA funds in Hayes County. So we are working through that and have had, and we also are, we also did the emergency assistance program. Essentially, what this will do is it'll impact the residents and outline the community needs. This is kind of the first step in the process. And then as you look at the, the plan, you'll be able to, to implement some of those things. And it, it could be housing, economic development, but it really does lay out the application and, and lay out how you will fund things later on down the road.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions? Good, okay, those in favor say aye.
We gotta make a new motion.
Gotta make a new motion, okay.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Nineteen.
Okay, with that, we have a motion on the table by Councilmember Floris Cale, and second by Councilmember Parsley. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, just for clarification, does that include the analysis to impediments to fair housing as well?
Yes, because I, we did the amendment, and then with the amendment, then we did another motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited, thank you.
All right, next up, we have Agenda Item Number Twenty, the Considered Impossible Action to Approve the Resolution of the City of Kyle. City Council authorizing and directing the Intern City Manager to execute an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the operation and maintenance of traffic signals at certain freeway locations. This is also your agenda item.
Mayor Protem and Council Amber Smythe, again, for the record. This is another, I guess, a sign that we're growing up. We have reached fifty thousand population. And so at that point in time is when Techstat asked that the cities take over the operation and maintenance of the signals. And so everything has been in place. I, I believe Scott Egbert might be on the line, in case y'all have any questions. He's the one who will be administering this program. They, Techstat went through, and they brought all of their signals up to speed. Our street department went out with them and did a punch list, made sure they're all up to speed. So they're all operating at, at maximum capacity at this point in time. We have a contract for the signal work with Austin Traffic Signals. And there is money in the budget to complete the rest of this year, and we will be asking probably for a little bit more money in the budget to make sure we are good for next year. And this first ask is to take over O N M for the three freeway locations that we have.
I have a quick question.
Catherine.
So this will take, because I remember talking to somebody on Techstat, and they did, you know, mention to me about, you know, when you guys hit fifty thousand residents, we as a city will have maintained those traffic signals. You say that there is only three that we maintain?
Three on the freeway, so three on I thirty-five, and then, then the next Agenda Item are the twenty-three on.
Okay, yes.
So twenty-six in total.
Okay.
And then twenty-three on the rest of the Techstat system that we will have to take over.
So how much will it be for us to get in contract with them? Is there's like an annual contract that we will be getting into?
Well, we, we're going to look at different options. Right now, since the signals are operating, you know, so well, we don't, we don't anticipate that we'll have much O N M. It'll be a bit of a learning curve. We, we have talked about issuing maybe some RFPs later or an IDIQ, but at this point, we have Austin Traffic Signal that we think can do, can do the work. I believe we have about twenty-five thousand dollars left in the budget for, which is forty percent remaining of this fiscal year. And we'll up that budget for next year. Hopefully, we won't run into many O N M problems, but that's, we're gonna, we're gonna learn as we go.
I would like, yes, I would like to see if, you know, in a year from now, we can take a look in how much we're paying them, and if it's more feasible to do like a technician, engineering specialist to take care of these signals.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
All right, I'm borderline pretty excited to be able to control these lights, because I know there's been times where the residents have kind of had concerns over in Post Oak about hot light changes. And so there's a little bit of excitement of being able to control our own stuff. My ask to staff, and maybe if we can all collectively agree during the budget season, would be to maybe hire somebody instead of constantly contracting out. Hire somebody to be able to do the maintenance on it and to be able to control it. So that way, in the event we need somebody right away, there's not a delay. And so, but with that said, I'd like to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty.
Twenty-one, too.
Okay, well, we can go in if we want to combine, can we combine those two?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty and Twenty-One?
Second.
Okay, Floris Cale, would you go with that? Okay, do we have any discussion on either one of these? Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, I do have a question, and because Techstat is here. I noticed that there are white cameras on some of these traffic light signals on the major intersections. What is being recorded on those cameras? Traffic, or is it, who's collecting the data on those cameras? Because there are several of them over by the Kyle Crossing. So is it reported back to like traffic webpages, or what, what is, what's being watched?
Good question. Scott, are you on the line and able to answer? Thank you.
I am, ma'am. Mayor Protem, Council, this is Scott Egbert, the Street Department. Those cameras are actually just sensors. They draw grids on the pavement, basically. Whenever a car enters that grid, it tells the signal that somebody's there. It does not do any recording. Now, there are some cameras that Techstat has in place on the interstate to monitor traffic to, you've probably seen the message boards Techstat has up, saying thirty minutes to from here to here, and stuff like that. But the cam, the cameras you're seeing on the signals are basically sensors to trip the light and tell the signal that somebody is there at the intersection.
Like a person walking, or we're talking about just vehicles there tripping the line?
A vehicle.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I always thought there were visual cameras to show how bad the traffic congestion is at six o'clock. Thank you.
Look, that's the reason why I always go up to that white line, because if somebody is not up there, it takes forever for the light to change. So I think we need to spread the word.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Okay, so for the record, we have a motion on the table for Agenda Item Number Twenty for the Considered Impossible Action to Approve Resolution for Traffic Signals at Certain Freeways, and on Twenty-One, Certain Non-Freeway Locations. Any other discussions? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, we're moving along. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, we are, have here is the First Reading for an Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, Adopting a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Amend Approximately Twenty-Six Acres of Farm Landscape to Regional Node for Certain Parcels South of the Interstate of S H Twenty-One and East F M One Fifty. Amend approximately three acres to New Settlement District from Regional Node and amend approximately nineteen, eighteen point nine acres from New Settlement District to Regional Node. This area outlined in the map includes fourteen point five acres of existing regional node with a total approximately of sixty acres, provided for related matters. So this agenda item is Mr. Will Atkins, Planning and Directing, and Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero for approval. This is a, this has a public hearing, correct? Okay.
Yes, sir. Did you want to go ahead and open the public hearing first?
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing for this agenda item. If anybody would like to come up and speak. Seeing that nobody is here, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay.
All right, Will Atkinson, Director of Planning for the Record. This Comp Plan Amendment, it was at the request of y'all a few months back in late January, when there was a zoning request that came forward for the neighborhood commercial zoning just adjacent to and south of the existing gas station. And part of that discussion, or a significant portion of the discussion, was between, that y'all had, and also the Planning and Zoning Commission mirrored, was that the neighborhood commercial zoning district was not intense enough from a retail perspective. And the only reason staff could support the neighborhood commercial and not something more like retail services, which is general highway commercial, was because the comp plan did not support it at that time. So this is, uh, this is being brought forward to y'all because y'all requested that it be brought forward to y'all. And just to provide a little bit of explanation of what you see on the screen right there, the thick black boundary is the total proposed regional node. The one that's, has the little dots on it is the existing regional node. So everything north of one fifty there, as it's coming into Twenty-One, we are essentially turning it and expanding it to match the existing retail services zoning district, which is a little over thirty acres right there. And then everything south of one fifty, we're having it match existing boundary lines for properties. And also, there's a stream that comes into the south, so we want to make sure that we're accounting for everything in between accordingly, just from a logical perspective. And that's essentially it, from, from my perspective. Do y'all have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, just questions, any motions? Councilmember Floris Cale.
I just want to say, I asked a million questions via email before all this. And so it is my understanding that even if we change this, that even though there's different, is it zones? Re-zones that could happen.
Districts, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that ultimately those have to come back to council for approval. And because of them, I'm a little bit more comfortable, but it makes me really nervous knowing that there's a ton of different homes and apartments that can go in this area if future council chooses, so.
That's accurate. And, and to follow up on that, this is, this sets the foundation for what can possibly go there within the bounds of the regional nodes. You're looking at the biggest and most prevalent item in there is retail services, which is your general highway commercial. So big box, shopping center, kind of restaurants around the perimeter, that kind of idea. But there are other options for multifamily, vertical mixed use as well. But yes, as within that, within the bounds of the regional node, if a property owner wants to come forward to rezone their property to take better advantage of the market and what have you, they would come to staff and have a discussion with us first. And we would say, ah, we're not sure, or yes, or no, or what have you. And if they decide to apply, which is their right, then it'll go through the process, go and get a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately, city council, y'all have to, will make your decision whether y'all see that it's appropriate or not.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you for your patience.
No, it's my pleasure.
Any other discussions? Go ahead, Zuniga.
So, thank you, Will. I, I did read the emails, and I remember this discussion on the regional node. So what have, have you been notified of any interest in any, any businesses coming on the site?
The, the thirty-plus acres to the north, yes. There is a, there's an entity that is looking at that, and they're going through the traffic impact analysis with Techstat right now. They're the ones that initially asked to be annexed and comprehensive plan amended to account for this corner. And they're doing, they're on their third step right now. I'm not sure how public it is, so I'm a little bit hesitant to say the name. But I suspect it'll, it'll add a lot of good stuff to that, that section of the city.
In the last council meeting, I remember we, we made what we proposed, maybe something to a developer with townhomes and retail. Is that something that could work in here, too? Like a PUD, something, something like that?
For, generally, as, as we understand it as staff, we understand that y'all, the city council, are, are big fans of PUDs in the associated development agreements, so anybody.
That's an easier way to get around some zoning.
It, it's an easier way to have surety from y'all and have an excellent project that y'all can get a visual on. Yes, from a concept plan, from tightening restrictions, from architectural requirements, as long as it's a mutual agreement and what have you. As y'all have seen in the past, the C T C residential, the Woodmere Park, similar projects like that. So yeah, well, we, as projects come along, we can certainly start coordinating with those. But if they already have their zoning, then they have their entitlements, so then they just need to meet those requirements that are already built into the code.
Okay, thank you. Just one clarification.
Yes, sir.
Are any more discussions or motions? I'd like to go and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty-two. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Prattshaw. Is there any other discussions on this motion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Out of curiosity, will this come back for a second reading? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I think this is, this was just the first reading on that. Okay, next item's going to be Twenty-three, to Authorize an Award and Execution of Purchase Order to Texas Material Groups. City of Park, Texas, Lowest and Most Responsible Bitter in an Amount Not to Exceed One Million, One Hundred Forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy cents, which includes a five percent contingency spot for repairs on Coler's Crossing, F M Two Seven Seven Zero, and I Thirty-five Southbound Frontage Road. This item is City Engineer Leon Barba.
Mayor Protem and Councilmembers Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor Protem and Council, back on July of Twenty-two, I brought an item to council for approval. It was requesting money for a firm by the name of Arius to do some forensic testing on Coler's from Southbound Frontage Road all the way to Twenty-Seven Seventy. Try to give you a little bit of things to look for as you drive our roads, maybe I'll train you to do some work for us. But anyway, about a year and a half, two years ago, as I was driving down Coler's after rain, I noticed some white powder on sections of Coler's Crossing, and that bothered me, because that's a four-lane roadway. It was built around twenty-eleven, as best I can remember. So we'd done the micro-surfacing on it about three, four years ago, but I noticed that white powder. And that white powder comes from the fines that are in the base material that's underneath it. As you have, typically, our roads will have about two to three inches of mix on them, and as they start to fail, they start cracking, and they start pumping. And what that does is that brings that fine material from the base up to the surface. So if you drive some of our roads after rain, you start noticing that, you'll, you'll note that it's getting ready to fail. So if it happens after that, you get potholes and failures. And that, again, that really bothered me, because I went back and looked at the plans for the, that project. They had about seven inches of, they treated the subgrade, and then they had seven inches of gravel or base, and then they had six inches of hot mix. So think about it, that powder was coming up through six inches of hot mix, and that's when I really got concerned and said, oh, my goodness, we're losing this road. It's, it's typically, it's a twenty-year design for these roads, but you don't just say, leave it there for twenty years. You have to do preventive maintenance. It's the same thing as changing the oil in your vehicle. They'll last for a long time as long you do the maintenance. And that's what we were trying to do with that section of Coler's Crossing, all the way from Twenty-Seven Seventy to the Southbound Frontage Road. Anyway, I, on, on the, they did the study for us. They used a couple of different techniques. They took cores, they used what's called a falling weight deflectometer, they used ground penetrating radar, and they, they had a surgical look at the road. We could have just said, look, why don't we just go through there, take out three inches of it, and put it all back in, and we're good. But then I knew there were areas that were more severely, had more severe problems than the rest of the section. So on, what we're doing with this project is we're going to do it in three phases, council. We're going to do three phases. The first phase is what we call spot repairs. We're going to take out some smaller areas, some very large areas, and most of the areas that have, I'm worried about, as you would imagine, are right there by Kyle Crossing and Coler's Crossing. Where all our trucks coming from, from that facility, that's where they're coming from, and that's, in my opinion, that's what's causing our road to start softening up. So we're going to do, the first phase is going to be doing the spot repairs. In the meantime, Uni-Pacific has also asked us to look at some repairs there at the railroad tracks, closer to the railroad tracks. So we're going to try to work with them and do a little bit of extra repair in there as, as part of the improvements in that section. There will be road closures, hopefully no more than four days, but things happen, so we're hoping to keep that to a minimum. There will be lane closures in there. So we're hoping to get this contract out, hopefully starting some time in a couple of months, and get the contractor started on that project. First phase is the spot repairs, as I mentioned. The second phase will be what we call crack sealing. Crack sealing is best done during the winter when the cracks are the widest. So we'll be working with Public Works to do the crack sealing in the winter of this coming year. After that, we, we typically have a one-year warranty on these repairs, so we're going to wait till the one year's up, make sure that there's no other, that everything's held up, and then we'll come back either with a chip seal, or we'll do another overlay, we'll do something else to. do something else to the roads. It's a three-step, uh, phased project, and it's gonna take time. In the meantime, we're looking at Cromwell, Benner's, and Sanders for possible roundabouts, possible traffic intersections. So we have to be aware that that might impact what we do in my third phase. And to make it more exciting, uh, for engineers anyway, uh, we do have a water line that we need to run down Coler's Crossing, uh, from 2770 at, uh, six, at, uh, Kyle Crossing. We have to put a new 12-inch trans, a 24-inch transmission line to the well site number four there at, uh, the, uh, at the well site that we have there on, uh, Coler's Crossing. So we're trying to incorporate that project. That may go down the center of the road, that may go down one of the lanes. So we just have to watch all those projects that are being done in there before we get to our third phase. The reason I would like to do the third phase is just to make it all one uniform road again, so it's overlay over the whole thing, or a micro-surface, or whatever we decide to do at that point. So we're looking at a, about a two to three-year project there.
Any questions? Councilmember Florescale.
Yeah, I just, um, wanna know where the funding for this is coming from?
About a year ago, I, I talked to Pervez, and I said, Pervez, I need about a million dollars. I did, I said, I don't know how much, I don't know how much it is, it's gonna cost, we haven't done our study yet. I don't know how much damage we got out there, but we need, and I just guesstimated that number, and, uh, Pervez did put that aside in the budget for us to do that work.
So is that general fund? CIP? Spin stuff out.
I have ideas. Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Pervez Mahid, city's director of finance. The funding for this project is coming from street rehab fund, and the source of funding is from adjacent lane mile fees. That's where we put all the ALM fees that we collect, and they're accumulated in that fund when projects like this one comes up for council consideration. That's when we budget those funds.
Okay. And, um, how much is currently in that fund?
Approximately, little over 2 million.
So afterwards, it should be, like, all over 1 million?
Well, we're also collecting fees.
Okay.
On, on, on an ongoing basis.
Okay. Uh, with that, I'd like to approve agenda item number 23.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made for approving agenda item number 23. Is there any other discussion on the, on the motion itself?
I have a quick question.
Hey, councilmember, now, Parsley.
Um, about how much do we, will we know during the next budget season about how much are we collecting in these fees? So we know how much goes back to that bucket?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
During the budget, we will discuss each fund, what the beginning fund balance is, how much we are projecting for, uh, revenues to come in, and also discuss with you what the estimated expenditures are for each fund.
Okay.
Councilman Zuniga.
Yes, Leon. So you mentioned in three phases it will be completed. Does that coincide with the segments, or, and also, did, you said there'll be road closures. Is there an option of doing one lane at a time, so that you don't close it down, um, the entire road? Or are we only closing down in, during the phases? Like, I'm, I'm kinda having a hard time understanding, uh, well, one, one question is, how many miles is this, that you're doing?
Uh, it's broken up into sections. I didn't add up the total sections, but it's, uh, varies from 200-foot sections to up to almost 3,000 feet in sections. The worst part of it is at that intersection, Kyle Crossing, Coler's Crossing. But it's about four and a half miles, I believe, from 2770 to the, um, Frontage Road, but we're not doing the whole thing. We're just doing those spots right now. And councilmember, we will have lane closures, we're gonna try to keep lane closures, but, uh, the railroad wants us to do some, uh, work at their crossing. They want to take out about two feet of the concrete that's there and come back in with just regular base and asphalt. And that means we'll have to close it for, for them to do their work in there, because they will be doing the work for that, that piece of it. And that's gonna be, the coordination's gonna be difficult with them, we know that. So that's, uh, gonna be a challenge for us to work with them on that. But we may have to close it and set up a detour route. And of course, the dilemma is that we'll have PD moving out there, so we'll have to work very closely with them on that.
So we still got a good lifetime out of this road, right? 2011?
Yes, yes. We're trying to get it, we're trying to get our 20 years back. But again, we have to continue to do, uh, our maintenance on, on the road.
Okay. I just wanted to see, you know, how much we were doing with it. Thank you.
Yeah. And my last question will be, yeah, what would be the difference between a CI project versus going with these contractors, uh, on this end? But I think it's a combination of working together to be able to maintain the roads. And, and you're right, you know, it, we may be looking at this high dollar value right here, this, this dollar amount. But, uh, again, guys, we, you gotta understand that the amount of traffic that goes on these roads every single day, you know, we gotta be able to make sure we, we keep up with the maintenance on it, especially when we're gonna start designing and building these new roads. These are gonna be costs that are gonna be, um, needing from the city, but it, it's necessary to prevent any kind of failures, any kind of potholes to where you've gotta go back again and reconstruct it, like we have these problems with these older roads. Okay. Anybody else have any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, next item up, forbid, uh, forbid. I know, we're having an auction. Next item up on the agenda item is number 24. This is the first reading of the ordinance of the city of Kyle to establish the community policing commission pursuant to section 7.06B and the city charter, providing for qualifications and duties of the commission and providing related matters. This is Paige Sines.
Mayor Council, Paige Sines, city attorney for the record. Uh, the, there's a draft of the ordinance for your consideration this evening, based on the workshop that the council held about a month ago regarding the terms and conditions of the community policing commission is, uh, and I, this is a recommendation of a name. Any provisions in here are subject to review input and any modifications you wanna make for second reading. Uh, the provisions of this ordinance are based on the discussion. Uh, that was quite detailed and quite a lot of good content and direction that council gave at that meeting. And so, the ordinance is a result of that. There are several provisions in here, just to kinda orient you to the, the layout of it. It, it is, uh, similar to other, the layout of other, um, ordinances you have that establish your boards and commissions. The first section establishes the commission. It notes some of the language in the charter directly that identify the purpose of the commission. It incorporates some of the language that council discussed about wanting to make sure this commission was independent and data-driven, and based on local data. The next section discusses, you've got a provision in your ordinance that governs boards generally, so we note that, and then we note where this ordinance would govern in the event of a conflict with that section. Membership and qualifications, this section was discussed, uh, quite thoroughly by council. There's a couple of provisions in here I wanna point you to that need further input. The commission shall consist of five, seven members. The, the council discussed options related to how many members the commission would have, but did not, I did not see that there was a conclusion. So we, we require some input from council on that item. Regarding the qualifications in subsection B, the council discussed that the members of the commission would not be related to any member of the police department. There's a need to define what that means, and the way we define that typically in, uh, state law and your regulations are the degree of affinity, so that's by marriage, how, how close are they by marriage, and consanguinity, how close are they by blood. I sent you a chart, so you've got that in your emails during the meeting that shows you how far those, uh, the circles of, of kinship, will show you how far that goes. So you could say the first degree of affinity or consanguinity, second or third, you, you go as far as you determine. Um, and then you also said that an immediate family member should not be related to a member of the police department. And the definition provided was suggested to you in this ordinance is, an immediate fam- family member can't be related to, um, an immediate family member, someone who's related with in the first degree. And that would be like, uh, spouse or, uh, brother, sister, parent, child. Those are the people within the immediate family member definition of this ordinance. One of the provisions discussed was kind of the criminal background check element, and the way this ordinance addresses that issue is, the council, it was important to the council to have an orientation for the commission. And section 2-129 states that the commission will attend an orientation, and it describes some of the content of that orientation. Please add to, modify as you need to. It also says the orientation will include a ride-along program. And so, as the chief discussed, if you, in order to participate in the ride-along program, you have to pass a background check. And so that would, um, if you're going to serve on the commission, you'd, you'd be able to participate in the ride-along program, which then requires you to pass the background check. Section 2128 addresses the selection process per council's discussion. 2130 are the duties of the commission, as discussed. There was a primary duty of, of preparing the annual report, and secondary duties that related to reviewing the timeliness and effectiveness of messaging and communications, reporting to the city council on a quarterly, quarterly basis on some of the data that will be reviewed by the, the commission. And then in the final, would be making recommendations in the annual report. The commission is limited and won't review incidents of use of force, departmental personnel investigations, or matters involving negotiation and meet-and-confer agreements. Uh, the council, the commission points a chair and vice chair, but it's just a common function of commissions to do so. This also addresses city manager, assistant city manager, who supervises police department, and the police chief or the assistant police chief, or act as the staff liaisons to the commission. And then 2-133 addresses the meeting and reporting requirements to, to the council, which are done on a quarterly basis, with that first quarter and that last quarter to be focused on putting together the scope of the annual report, and the last quarter report to the council being the, reporting the annual report. So that's a general overview of the ordinance, and identifies a couple of areas where specific input is needed. And, um, I am happy to answer any questions or take direction to make changes.
Okay. Well, here it is, ladies and gentlemen. Finally, Prop F ordinance. Um, let's have some discussion. Councilmember Florescale.
Um, my, first of all, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Paige.
Um, I understand sometimes council's direction's not very easy to understand or clear, so I re, I rewrote this a couple of times, and I think you did a great job. Um, so, one of my first requests would be under section 2-125, establishment of community policing commission and purpose. Um, when we say oversight, I think it's important that we define oversight, because I don't want to give them a whole bunch of authority. You know what I mean? I don't think we wanna do that for, for any oversight council, or, I would just like to define the scope of their responsibilities as far as being an oversight group. So I don't know if that's possible to define it or to give examples. Um, I would like to see seven members, but it's not a hard seven for me. It depends on, um, what I think other people would feel. For me, it's, uh, the more people, the better idea of, of, uh, things that we can fix. Um, I do get kinda nervous by making recommendations, um, for operating procedures, just because I don't know if we would do that for, uh, say, like, Public Works, or for an oversight. Like, if we had an oversight committee as a council, do we want them to tell us exactly? I mean, they don't know the things that we know, and so, when, when these residents are gonna be, um, giving advice, I just wanna make sure that they're fully informed, ultimately. Um, and then as far as kinship, I see that there's an affinity and then con, consig- seg- segwity? Um, it's, okay, look. Cons, consanguinity. Just like in school. Um, we just picked between one of these two? Is that what you guys are asking? Like, how do we want it to look?
We just need to know what related means.
Okay.
So, so, first degree is like an immediate family member, second degree is it's, so a first degree would be like a parent, the second degree would be a grandparent. So you'd go, you'd go two levels.
So I do like the affinity, like, I, I don't want it to be able to be like your brother-in-law could, you know what I mean? So I, I don't know how we limit that, but I wouldn't want in-laws.
Okay. And that would be affinity, is the in-laws and consanguinities of the blood relatives. So affinity captures the spouse, and then the in-laws, and consanguinity captures the immediate family members.
But it would, the affinity would also cover blood as well, or no? Well, I'm just saying, I, if I don't want a brother-in-law, I certainly don't want a daughter.
I'm pulling up the charts, I've got it.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so, if it's a first degree of kinship, you're gonna have father-in-law, son-in-law, spouse, daughter-in-law, mother-in-law. That's first degree of affinity. Second degree gets to your spouse's grandparent. So I, I would imagine first degree probably captures what you're looking for. If we say first degree of affinity and first degree of consanguinity, that, that gets the immediate blood relatives and then, and the immediate in-laws. The immediate in-laws would be father-in-law, son-in-law, spouse, daughter-in-law, mother-in-law.
Okay. Um, let me ask it this way. I know to be on a board, there's limitations if somebody's on council and their relative wants to be on a board or commission. Do we know what that looks like? And is there any way to keep it kinda consistent with that, so we?
Your charter may have a provision, and if your charter doesn't have it, it would be state law. It, it, it affects the employees. There's a, there's a nepotism law that applies to employees.
But doesn't it apply to council nominating or having family on boards and commissions as well?
It does, because that will be the, it, they're defined as officers, correct?
Yes.
And it applies to that.
So I'm wondering what this, what we do for our council.
I can confirm, there's two places I need to look, so let me, let me do that.
So what you're trying to narrow down is that if there is somebody that is related to a person on council, whether they are related by in-law or others, that they would not qualify to be on a board?
No, not from council, since they will be considered officers, they will not be qualified to be on a board. Like, if my mother-in-law. I mean, I think my mother-in-law could under this provision, but that's what we're trying to avoid.
Well, th- this provision says that it's a member of the commission can't have a certain degree of relationship with a member of the police department.
Police department.
You're keeping the family members of police department members off of the board to maintain that objectivity.
Okay. So we're going off of the police department itself?
Correct.
Versus just?
Correct.
In employees.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just trying to compare it.
You wanna com- you wanna compare.
See what we have, and is that something that we wanna implement for this committee, if, if that makes sense?
Because that would fall under the line when it comes to the, um... Under section, I believe it's under six, that demonstrate any bias against or for, I guess against, and that, and I guess I would bring it up to number six, is not to have a demonstrated bias against law enforcement, but should it also state for law enforcement? I mean, back and forth?
That, that is, that can, that could be added. My, when I reviewed the discussion, it seemed to be, the concern was primarily against bias against. I didn't wanna...
Yeah, my question-
I did not add to that.
My question would be, if we don't want anybody for or against, then who would we pick?
Yeah.
And how do you really go and dig through that? Which brings the point from seven members. I think we're, we're making it clean enough, you know?
Mm-hmm. To where it's just, you don't have any biases, favoritisms to or from, and you, 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 everybody's gonna have their views on things, but when it comes to this, you know, you're showing what you wanna be as nonpartisan as possible, which-
And, and it's-
It's, it's gonna be tricky, we understand.
It is.
It's gonna be hard. But it's, if, there are people out there that will look at it like that to say, I am here to do this, to be on this board, to look at everything objectively, from both sides, and from the data. Because again, this is data-driven information.
Mm-hmm.
And so what we could do is, if we have more discussion, if you want, council, we can go line by line and then vote on the first reading of, of the sections. If you want to go by that, if anybody else has any other feedback. We can do it then. So, if you want, we can go ahead and start with the ordinance language itself. Of course, it's already there, stated by the charter, where the whereas. It all the way goes, all the way down. So we can go now to the division of the community policing committee. The section 2125, establishment of the community policing, policing commissions. It's still verbiage from the charter itself. It is intended that the commission be independent, data-driven, and performs its duties and recommendations, free from pro or anti-law enforcement biases or based on local data. So the recommendations that any action that results, commission's recommendations are meaningful and effective for the citizens there. So we can now go on to section 2126, applica- applicability of regulations governing boards general. Do we see anything in that section? Now, if not, we can go to section 2127, membership and qualifications. So I think this is where we need to take the first reading vote on, A, the commission shall, shall, sorry about my language, shall consist of five or slash seven members.
I have a question. If, if the person is not going to be a council member, can a council member suggest of a member of the community to be a part of this board? I mean, like, if we pick our own ethics appointee?
Well, I think that's where it lies to where we go into the, where we're doing the, going with the boards and commissions policy, orientation, the selection process, which is in 128. The application shall include the paperwork required to confirm the individual's eligibility to participate in the police department's ride-along program. But it also, the city manager, assistant city manager, and one council member appointed to the council shall interview the qualified individuals for the commissions as recommended by the individuals for appointment. It's kind of keeping the same concept of our boards and also our library that we're doing the same thing here. Because if, if we look at it like appointing, again, who's to say that, you know, I'm going to appoint this person here, you know, because I feel that this person would, would fit?
And it wouldn't be appointing it, I'm saying is like, we know which of our residents are involved and are, who are the residents that ask questions? Or who are the residents that are interested in what goes on in the city? So I'm just wondering if, if we were to open this up and a couple of residents reach out to each of us saying, hey, you know, I might meet the criteria and would like to be considered, we could make this suggestion.
Well, it'd be the same thing if they just, we just, it's just like right now, like right now, we have openings for parks boards. And I put on my Facebook, hey, this is a great opportunity for you to get involved. If you're interested, here's the link. We can promote it that way. And, or it's just like anything else, you guys hiring, yeah, well, go onto the website, see if, if you, if you fit. We can, we can encourage them to apply.
To do it.
But as far as appointing, I think that's where we were kind of at.
Yeah, no, and I don't mean, let's appoint this person.
Can we recommend?
That's what I was thinking.
Can we somehow, I mean, I don't want to say, we can recommend now, but maybe on the application further down the process, there could be an area where they could say they were recommended by, you know, this council member, if that makes it easier. But I think as far as giving it weight, that's going to be difficult.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, can we not do that? I think that kind of goes against a lot of the nepotism, even though it's not direct nepotism, it's, it's a similar principle of someone who could carry bias or someone's perception forward onto a committee, onto the oversight commission. Excuse me.
So, so going back to section 127A, the commission shall consist of five or seven members.
I'd like to make a motion for seven members.
Okay. There's been a motion on the table by councilmember Floris Kell to go with seven members. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Okay, we have a second by councilmember Zuniga on the proposition of seven members for this committee. Do we have any discussion on the motion itself?
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of curious, because I go, I can go either way. But why, why the lesser of the two would be my question?
It was for time, right? A smaller meeting, more done, less back and forth. But I'm not opposed to seven.
I, I could go either way, too. Like, it's, you know, with seven, it's like, because that too many cooks in the kitchen, and then if it's five, do we have enough expertise?
Five show up, right? Because there's always schedules.
This is, you know, just to go through the data, you know?
Well, I mean, expertise to go through the data is what I'm talking about, because data analysis isn't really something that is like...
But then are we going to be requiring a particular set of skills for you to be on the board?
Right.
Well, my...
Let's go with seven.
My thought would just be the more you have, the more ideas you have. And that's, just because that's the way I learn, but I can understand why there would only be five in the essence of time.
You did just say that, do we want recommendations, though?
No, 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 we, we decided no. Recommendations for like, I don't think we're going to recommend.
No, no, recommendations from the commission to us.
Yep. So we have a motion on the table for a total of seven members for this, for this committee. Do we have any further other discussions on this? Okay, those in favor for seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those for five, those disapprove, nay.
Nay.
So we have...
It was like, who said yes and who said no?
It's four to two.
Four to two.
When you don't say anything.
Okay. So the first reading, we have a total of seven on the, for section eight.
And we can always adjust that, right? Like, we can bring this back if seven's not working.
Do we have a second reading on this?
No, I just mean, like, later on, after it's established.
Sure. Yes, for right now, we're just establishing the ordinance. So, okay, so we're now going to go to section B. Do we have anybody that has any comments or any changes that you want referencing that section there? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead, go to section 128, the selection process.
Mayor Protim?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, on that one section about the degree of relationship?
Yes, ma'am.
I have an answer for that.
Okay.
And under your charter, the no person related within the second degree of consanguinity to a member of the council or the city manager can be employed. So you've got a, that's the degree when it comes to council or manager being related to an employee, if you're looking for a comparison.
So do we need to go ahead and make the motion to add that?
Well, as long as we understand what that second degree looks like. Would you mind just giving an example?
The second degree... Send that to you. Okay, second degree for consanguinity, your blood relative is father, son, daughter, mother. So nobody's a father, son, daughter, or mother of a police department employee, or grandfather, brother, sister, grandson, granddaughter, grandmother.
So that would be for section B, B, five?
Yes. And for the in-laws, it's, it's your father, son, spouse, daughter-in-law, mother-in-law. So the father, son, father-in-law, son-in-law, mother-in-law, daughter-in-law, spouse, and then your spouse's grandfather, spouse's granddaughter, spouse's brother, brother, your brother-in-law. That captures, that captures the brother-in-law, the sister-in-law, your spouse's grandson, spouse's grandmother, brother's spouse, which is a sister-in-law, and the sister's spouse, the brother-in-law. So it's, it's, it's like...
Yeah, like Kyle, like thirty, forty years ago, that was the whole town. Sorry, can't be on the board, brother. So I guess with number five, so we should go ahead and make a motion if we want to go ahead and add the verbiage or the number of second degree to section five?
Is that a motion?
Is it?
Second.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to add second degree to section five on 127.
Second.
Second by councilmember Floris Kell. Do we have any other discussion referencing that motion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion passes six to zero to add second degree verbiage on section five. Okay, we can continue to move on to 128, selection process. Anybody have any discussion items on that, on the qualifications and so forth? Okay. So then, let's move on to 129, during orientation. Members of the commissions shall attend an orientation that educates the members regarding the history, structure, functions of the police department provided by the city within thirty days of appointment, of appointment. The orientation shall include one ride-along with the police officer pursuant to the police department ride-along program. So are we all good on that? Councilmember Floris Kell?
Sorry. Can we go back to section 2-128, selection process? When it talks about the one council member appointed by the city council is, I don't know if anybody's interested in making that like a one-year limit, or like, what's the process if somebody doesn't get re-elected? So it just says right now, and one council member appointed by the city council should interview qualified individuals. Was that yearly, like, to be elected yearly?
I think it also goes with the term of the, of the boards, because I know everything else is two years. Like the Parks Board is, what, three years? And the Library Board is...
But are we changing every year? Like, wouldn't we represent different boards? So was it going to be the same way with this one as well?
So the board, this commission will have a two-year term, the members will have two-year terms. And your, your general process is there's a call for applications during, let me find that section, there's a call for applications from June 1st through August 31st of every year. And then, so it, it seems like, it seems like what would make sense is to have the council appointee designated, maybe in May or June, during that application period. And then, that council member, if you serve for a year, then you get to participate in the selection process for the board members who are up, their, whose term are up, and get selected by September 30th of that year. And then if there's any vacancies that arise during the year, then you, you'll be in service to select someone who fills that vacancy for a one-year term.
My question is for the council member?
Yeah, so the, if the council...
So would it just be like a one-year term according to the, like, election year? Not election year, but like, the year that they, you know, it's like a, it's like a year that...
Oh, because if you select somebody who's going to be up for election, you'd have to be careful about that, so...
Right. But if it changes every year, we could just say, make it a yearly position where...
We are going to be appointing these people, right, these residents, let's say this year. And then they will not be seeking to rejoin the board in two years.
Okay.
So if we were to do the selection this year, that councilman may or may not be here in two years.
So then, let's look at this on a yearly basis for council's relationship to this commission, the, the individual. So, for example, you, Yvonne, Mr. Mayor, no, no, not, no, he's not up for reelection. And Ashley would not be eligible to be, if this is what we're talking about, would not be eligible to be that, that liaison in the selection process, because you're up for reelection.
Well...
If that's what we're saying, if that's what we're in agreement here on, because someone might not complete the year in the tur...
Well, that, that, that I kind of disagree on, because you're still on council, because your voice still matters then.
Yeah.
It's kind of like how we have it right now. I'm on the Parks Board commission interview. He is on the, the train depot. You're on the, who's on the parks?
Danielle.
Okay, so Danielle's on the parks, and then whoever, you know, we have it on the economic development board, you know, you're still, we're still in those slots. Even though we're up for reelection that year, we're still up to election day, still end after, until we, the, the other person gets sworn in, we are still, we are still council members up to that point. So that's kind of why the whole concept was to follow the, the boards and commissions' policy and procedures that we went through so much about. And then that way, it's all uniform across the board. It's uniformed where we can be able to do with, the same with the parks, we do it with the education board, it's the same thing here. So it's, when the time comes to where we need to select a member for the Kyle Depot, the libraries, we can also assign somebody to the, this committee right here to be that liaison, whether they're up for reelection or not.
Right. So how do we state that in here, that, that is going to follow the same council?
Is there any way that prior to the selection of the board, there will be an agenda item to select the council member that will be making the interviews?
It would be an agenda item, yeah.
And so every time that there is going to be a selection process, then that, we will have an agenda item to select a new council member?
Yeah. Because when we had...
I don't know how we can work that in there.
When we had, to briefly say, when we had Ms. Christine Roberts up here, from when I interviewed her, I was on that board. So there was an opening for the library, and I was the one that was selected for the year to do that. So can we go with that?
Yes, if you give direction, I'll draft it. And my understanding is you're going to, we'll maybe put a date in here.
We will appoint the council member that will be participating in the selection process prior to the selection process.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Was that good enough for you to...
It is. And I'm going to note also that, since we know how many members there are for the commission, your first set of appointments of commission members, they should serve staggered terms so they're not all rolling off at the same time.
Yeah.
So I'll put a paragraph in here for a second reading that talks about, your first set of appointments, you'll have some that will serve just a year, and then others that will serve a full year, a full, their full two-year term, so that they can get on that staggered cycle.
So, so, should it just be across seven? Because you never know, let's say we finally, well, let's say we do it this year, we get seven people on board. Somebody has to drop out, unfortunately, within the year, then that's where that process will lie. But as long as we stay within the parameters, so that we're all in, in, in the election years to where we're not having to choose one here, choose one there, but we'll appoint as, as, as we need to. So if somebody's on for a year, then the selection process for the whole committee is done, then they can reapply and go from there.
Okay.
So now we're going on to section 130, the duties. Anybody have any questions referencing that? All right, let's go to section 131, limitations. Anybody have any feedback on the, the limitations? The commission shall not review incidents of use of force, department personnel investigations, or matters involving negotiating or meet and confer agreements. We're all good on that? Okay, let's go to section 132, officers' liaisons. We're good on that with the appointments. And section 133, meetings and reported counsel. Are we all good on that? Okay. So now we're going down to section three, the amendment of the ordinances. Are we good on the verbiage on the code, the effective date, and the open meetings? Okay. All right, if we are all in agreement with this first reading, anybody would like to make a motion to approve it? Okay?
I, do you have a question? Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of agenda item 24.
Okay.
With the proposed amendments establishing the community policing commission pursuant to section 7 dot 06B of the city charter.
Okay. Motion has been made by councilman Hyzer referencing the agenda item number 24, second by councilmember Parsley. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Great. Good job, everybody. We've got six to zero on this for the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Mayor Protim, I have a request that you take up an agenda item that you previously voted on, number 19.
Okay.
In reviewing the action, there was a motion and a second made on increasing that amount from 35,780 to 46,485. So there was a motion and a, and a second, so there's, but there, there was not a vote taken on that. So we just want to close that out. If you would take that agenda item back up and vote on that motion to increase that contract cost.
Okay.
And then we'll make, we'll make Provez happy and city secretary happy.
Yes.
Yvonne, do you want to go ahead?
Yvonne, will you make the motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the amount of $46,485. thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars not to be exceeded for the professional services related to accepting HUD entitlement status and the CDBG program.
Second.
Okay, motion was made to increase the dollar amount by Councilmember Flores Cale and seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, now we're moving on to agenda item number twenty-five. It's to have a discussion, possible action directing staff to research other city-related mental health programs, including third-party partnerships, creating a service contract to support Kyle residents who are still seeking healthcare, mental health. This is also Councilmember Bear Heiser, Flores Cale, and Danielle Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. This is something that is very important to me, mental health, and I know it is, it's something we've talked a lot about, and I don't want to take a lot of time speaking on this. I think we've all, through previous conversations up here on the dais, have heard from experts and had conversations with with staff on the lack of mental health resources that are available to residents of the city. We have, independently from these meetings, met with Seton Hospital, heard from them and heard that behavioral health, mental health problem cases are number two in terms of the the volume of services that they receive in that hospital. So it's something that I really think that we as a city, especially as that we're growing and, you know, life gets more complicated, that we really need to look at how we better can support the mental health of our residents. And so the the three of us, myself, Yvonne, and Danielle, have have discussed how we could try to go about this. And the the ask today, and I'll open it up, would be for staff to just, let's look at comparison programs of what some other cities have done around the country to to put together those resources to fill the gaps, work with third-party organizations so that we're not having to send, Seton Hospital's not having to send patients, you know, thirty, forty minutes away to take the next step in in the journey of, you know, seeking mental health care. So with that, I will yield my time.
Let me ask Councilmember Flores Cale.
Yeah, okay, I'll make my brief. I am aware that County Commissioner Mark Jones had started a process where we would have something at the county level to assist with mental health. And so in the process of our staff speaking to other cities, I would also like to see our staff speak to the county to see what we can do to get a regional hospital to assist with our with our mental awareness issues that we have. I did speak briefly to Chief Barnett, and he mentioned that sometimes we have to drive forty minutes to an hour to get somebody there. And so if you've ever been in that situation, forty minutes to an hour can feel like a lifetime. And so that would be my ask, is that we also reach out to the county to see how we can work collectively together to get some kind of building or structure or hospital closer to our city, which not just us, but you know, City of St. Marcus and Beauda could utilize. And that would be, that would be all I ask.
I appreciate, but both Councilmember Heiser and Councilmember Flores Cale have mentioned, because it's kind of resumes what I would like to mention. I do know that County Commissioner, County Commissioner Cohen is really big on to mental health. She has been in a couple of meetings with us, and I think that working collectively with the county will be the way to go for us to try to come up with some sort of plan to offer more. I would like to see what resources we have, what has been used, and how can we connect with them and to work into bringing something to Kyle, so.
I'd like to add that I I think one of the things that most of these places have a hard time with is the facility itself, and the staff and the resources. We can go with the resources, but again, you got to have a location. Or just a facility that somebody can really go to and get that care, whether it's counseling services or medical and so forth. So I I want to know if city staff could maybe possibly look around the city to see if there's any places that might, any, any buildings or any facilities right off the bat, just to kind of see what kind of a location that if we were to help with the county on this, if we were to bring something to the city. And then also maybe look at to where could we look at maybe hiring a City of Kyle human, I mean, a mental health resource counselor that could work within the city to to help identify those things.
And we can look at all the, all those things we've already discussed internally as staff, and we believe the county has some resources that we could participate in and maybe contribute to, to expand on that. But we can, we can look at other cities that have mental health programs as well as what might be available privately within the city.
And I'm still waiting to hear back from the Texas Recu- Texans Recovery Group. They were the ones that we brought aboard about two years ago with the COVID pandemic when we had teenagers and adolescents who were struggling with mental health and depression. Just waiting to hear back from them to see if they're still having fundings. But I also noticed, I did read up not too long ago, the state is really looking at trying to get more money into the mental health. Maybe that's something that we can look at on that level, if we can go to our district or congressional on that end, start going from there to say, if we could start tying some of that money to come to Hayes County, referencing that, we can go from there. Councilman Heiser?
Yeah, I was just going to say that my intention for this, or my hope down the road, is that we are able to partner not only with the county, but our our local and national representatives to to bring money back here so that we could have our own program that we could, that we could run as a city. Using third parties is is the experts to actually operationalize it on a daily basis. But that is where I hope to see that go, because I know that Seton's future plans for growth here are not more behavioral and mental health resources are not necessarily front and center in those plans. So unless there's something else that I'm unaware of at the moment, I don't see an immediate solution. And just given the, you know, let's just look at the the fentanyl issue that's taking place right now. I've, you know, sat in rooms with some of those parents and heard their stories, and and the stories are the same, that they saw treatment, you know, that the insurance was an issue, they couldn't afford it, they were sent, you know, forty-five minutes, an hour away up north, you know, north of Austin. You know, we need to be able to offer, have something here for people to to use i- if needed. And, you know, I know that there's grant money available as well, so that's something that we could look at. And I know that staff already has, and Victoria's not here, but she's been super helpful in in, you know, setting up opportunities for for myself and some others to learn more about what what the city currently is doing, has done in the past, so thank you.
All right, I'll be brief. I'm just going to see if our staff would look at the City of Seattle's website. I know Seattle has one of the highest suicide rates, and so they are big on mental wellness. And sometimes it's just offering resources, being able to provide residents a place where they can read information. I see right here, there every year, they have an event where people just get together, and that's nothing more than just people gathering and giving support. So if I could recommend that, I think it's a great resource.
Okay. Is that in need of a motion, or do we just go ahead and direct staff to to look at that?
It'd be best if we had a motion to direct staff and outline what the direction is.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, these are all great ideas. I also would like to see if, I know we're full of, full of many events, but maybe the city could work on an event that's like a health and wellness event where residents can come out, learn their blood pressure, learn about nutrition, and we partner with the Seton or the school district so people can come out and learn more about symptoms and what they can do to, you know, be in a better state of mind, but have the, make it a community type of event. I know there are some organizations that are doing great work already, but if we had a little type of event, that would be useful to the community.
Sure. Yeah, I think Arsenean does something like Health Fair every year at the hospital. But we could look at seeing if we can maybe partner up or something like that on that end. So do we have a motion? Does anybody want, go ahead, Councilmember Bradshaw?
Okay, so I'll be the bad guy here. I don't think that it is the government's role to get involved with mental health. I think that it is coming from a really great place, and I empathize completely, but I personally don't think that government should interfere metal with mental health or health of any individual. And I would be willing to say yes to this, but only if, only support something that is brought back that does not cost any taxpayer money. So that's where I'm at with it. I would be willing to have staff look into it, but I'm not willing to expend resources on it.
Any other discussions or motions?
I don't think there is a motion.
Okay.
But, and then I don't know if there wants to be amendment, but I would like to make a motion to direct staff to look into the third-party partnerships that are related to bring some support of mental health. And I guess once this is done, then we can work collectively with the county, but let's look into the resources first, get those presented to us just for informational purposes, and then we can take another vote.
Okay, motions on the table?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale, that we look at the, having directing city staff to look at the third-party partnerships for creating services and resources for mental health services. Any discussions on this? Councilmember Flores Cale?
I just want to state, I totally understand where Councilmember Bradshaw is coming from, but as a reminder, on both of our bridges that we have, both Center Street and over by Kyle Parkway, we've had people jump off that bridge. And so that's, that's where it becomes, I feel like, some kind of responsibility somewhere to at least be able to direct them. I see what you're saying, like not expend too much money, although I think some cities have like their own hospital, so it's not far-fetched. But I think being able to at least provide resources, links. When I was looking at the City of Seattle's, they had just like links, like applications, not that they sponsor, but I think one was like Calm, the Calm app. And just being able to provide those resources for people doesn't cost us very much. So, but I do understand what you're saying.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I'm good, actually.
All right, those in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? I'm sorry.
The motion was just to bring information about third-party resources that could offer mental health.
You throw grants in there?
But contact our legislators, too.
So, so, yeah, we're going to direct staff to do that.
That's priority.
Yes, okay. The motion's on the table for that, okay? So we, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose? All, we've passed a six to zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you all of you all for bringing this important topic. Great discussion. Okay, let's bring item number twenty-six, discussion of possible action regarding the city purchasing and donating a PET chip scanner to the fire department. This is Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. I think Mariana has to be here early tomorrow. Is there any way that we can move up her agenda item, number twenty-nine?
Okay.
Those are mine, twenty-nine and thirty?
Okay.
Yeah, is it okay if, yeah, can we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, it's been, it's been suggested that we go ahead and bring up item number twenty-nine and thirty.
Or just twenty-nine, because that's all we need for?
Okay, twenty-nine for the consider possible action to identify an intern practical solution to install public restrooms at MKP City Square Park? And this is Councilman Zuniga.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protim. Hi, Mariana, if you could come up, I know you've been gone for a while and been a, been a long day. So this agenda item, can we show the backups on this? So this is mostly just informative. Can we see the backups? Is the public seeing the backups? So our MK, Mary Kay Park is a focal point. It's very beautiful. The only thing not there is our public restrooms for a community to use. And I know that staff has told me that there's been money, there is money in the budget approved two, three years back, maybe in last year's budget, for upgrades. And so I wanted just to get more information about what would be the timeline and what would be the design, where would the the best location possibly be, what type of security this restroom would have? And I did get feedback that something, there is something proposed, and it did look a lot like what I had found online. The only, I guess, well, residents need the restrooms down there, because because there's a lot of them that come and enjoy the park. But one concern is that if it's going to be put within the boundaries of the park, and the boundaries, I guess, are very specific, like within the park area, I don't want it in there. I'm not sure how other council members feel. I would like to see it outside of the boundaries so that there's not an issue. But, uh, could you also, Mariana, I'll ask you a question, give us more information about what might be the best location of of this modular portable type unit that we're looking at, which I believe it's a very nice unit? The only, the only thing I would like to add would be to maybe put in more, a bit of landscape around it, some flower beds or plants. Because because it looks a little simple, right? It looks a little simple, but still it, it looks like it fits down there.
Okay. Mariana Spinosa, Parks and Recreation Director. So our park maintenance supervisor, Benito, has walked the area with public works reps to determine the best location for these restrooms, and they've identified two locations which are both outside the park. I'm not sure if you're familiar with where the portable trailer during twenty-five days of Christmas was located. That's one possible location, and the other possible location is where the dumpster currently is. Right now, we're looking about, we plan to bring the final design and the contract to council in the first meeting in June. We've had to repost the RFQ. We did receive the final bid, but the subgrade now has to be posted through an RFQ, so that's going to be posted next week and for a minimum of fourteen days. So we're looking probably about a month and a half before these restrooms are actually come in, and then once they come in, it will be really quick process from there. And I did speak with Benito, and we talked about the front and like the visual look of these restrooms, and just so we could put some flower pots in front of them, but it'd be nothing planted, it would just be in pots.
That's a good idea.
I'm sorry.
And can we get Rachel the image up? I don't think the public can.
Have we decided on a design already for this?
So we have not, so we have not decided on a final design because we had to rebid the project.
Yeah, okay.
However, we've worked very closely with the vendor that did submit the bid to design them, and so once awarded, if council approves, the designs will be ready to go.
That, that'll be great. So I don't think it's necessary to, and again, I'm so sorry, to probably look at the backup because we will have to wait for the RFQ to come back. The one thing I think it would be important is to maybe match the Krug Center, so it looks like it's.
So the backup that Councilmember Zuniga added is very similar design to the restroom designs that we've been looking at. And so there'll be five different restrooms, and each park has a different design. So the one down at Mary Kyle Hartson Park's going to have that very historical feel that complements the Krug building. The ones at Stable Chase Park and Greg Clark Park have a bright pop to them because of the skate parks and the splash pads. So that's kind of the design. So that's kind of the design ideas behind them, but they are very similar to these backups. They're just a little more detailed.
Councilmember Flores Kail?
All right, thank you. So this agenda item is about interim practical solutions. So this is going to be long-term. But those ones that we're looking at, are those temporary?
No, the, the ones attached are a permanent restroom. So a temporary solution would either be the portable restrooms like we do for 25 days at Christmas, or the ADA stalls or single stalls.
Can we make sure, I think it's TDS that we get them through, can we make sure that they're air-conditioned?
If the direction is for us to get a portable restroom during the month and a half that we're waiting to get these new restrooms going, we would definitely get the air-conditioned one like we do for 25 days at Christmas. Total for the board doors, indoor stall, the ADA stall and the regular stalls is about $12,000 total per month.
Okay. That's a bummer. So you're saying, okay, because you're, you're saying it's going to be about a month and a half before we vote on it?
Right. Well, no, we're going to bring it to, our goal is to bring it to council the first meeting in June.
In June.
And about how long will it take to construct?
We spoke to the vendors, and they're ready to get going as soon as council approves. It'll be a minimum of three months.
Okay, so we're still looking at four months.
Yeah, so in other words, they're going to bring, they've got to go in there and redesign it, relook at everything, and they got to bring up with a new price. And then they, once they do that, they'll bring it either to council or to budget.
So the timeline that we're looking at.
And then once we approve the concept, the way it looks and everything else, then once we sign off on it because they're ready to go, then it should take probably about, maybe less than about two, three months.
Yeah, so originally, you know, they've told us, you know, 30 to 60 days, but the max would be four months. So once council approves, you'll have restroom, permanent restrooms at the park within three months at the latest, probably most likely a lot earlier.
Okay, so we'll look forward to it in June, that way we can decide on the concept and the colors and the way it looks. That way we vote on it by three months, four months, it'll be ready to go for Christmas.
I have a quick question, and this may be like, I don't know what would be cheaper, if we were to temporarily close sections of the Krug Center allowing for the bathrooms to remain open?
That's exactly what a resident reached out to me and asked.
Well, the Krug Center currently is a shared facility with CAS, and at this time, since CAS does occupy the building majority of the time, the restrooms are not open to the public.
But if we were to put a door, because you know, once you go in the Krug Center through the front door, and then there is their center door, I hate how to describe it, but you walk in and there is like, you can go to the right and they, they have the kitchen and something upstairs. Is there any way we can put some sort of block in there and to the actual event center?
I think it'd be really difficult just based on space. And then also at CAS's request, it's a request of theirs, not to have public in when they're not in there, just because they have a lot of stuff stored in there.
Yeah, and I don't want to mess with their things, I was just thinking $12,000 times four.
Forty-eight.
What would be the least expensive thing so we can have? Air-conditioning bathrooms.
And I don't think Benito's logged in, but I'm sure he's probably screaming at me that it's going to be a lot quicker than four months.
Okay.
So he's probably screaming at the TV right now.
Is it going to be before the end of summer?
I can't say with certainty, it all depends on once council approves and we get going, but the vendor's ready to move.
So I'd like to say a few more. So these are already built, and then they're just transported here, put onto the slab, right?
Right, but we have to have the subgrade installed, and that's kind of what was the delay on these.
I've got a few more questions from, these are questions from residents, so I have to ask them. How many, I guess, fixtures inside that they can use, like male, female, and whether it be changing room, family room, diaper room?
The final designs haven't been made yet, so I don't have the answers to those yet.
But there will be like a water system to refill your water bottle outside on these?
I don't know yet. But, yeah, we still have to make the final design.
Okay.
We have a really good idea, we know what we want the restrooms to look like, and what features we want them to have, there's a really cool one, we can stick the water bottle in.
Sure.
And so we've asked for that already, but nothing's been finalized. I can't say what they will with certainty have.
Right. And I think all of these are beautiful, so they just, I don't want the residents to be surprised, so they should be able to see whatever we've been thinking about or has been proposed.
Do we have any action that we need for this agenda item, or do we already have the direction?
Well, they're already bringing RFQs.
So I guess my question is, since the agenda item was for temporary restrooms, do we need to further explore bringing in the portable restrooms until the permanent restrooms are here? Or do we just continue since we're already in motion?
I, I only made this item, an agenda item, to speak about it, to get more details, and to make sure that it's not within the boundary of the park, so now we know that it's going to be outside the boundary. And now it's just, let's find the best fit location. So I know there's a cost to maybe closer to where the plumbing might be, or move it somewhere else, and I don't want, I don't want that to be the ultimate decision. I want whatever is best for the MK Park.
Understood.
For that toilet to be at.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mariana. Thank you.
So let's go back to now, agenda item number 26, discussion of possible action regarding the city purchasing and donating PET chip scanners for the Kyle Fire Department.
All right, I'll make this as quick as possible. So I, I was reached out from a resident, and she asked if the city, actually she asked, she wanted to like pay for some of the scanner, and I said, well, let me take this to council and see what they're willing to cover as far as price for a scanner chipper, which is essentially just to, to scan your animal, to see if they can find the owner. The reason why I like this idea is because it allows our staff the possibility of not having to drive all the way to San Marcos to drop off a dog, maybe they can find the owner here. And also, the county has, has contributed one to the firehouse, and so I thought to make it easier for residents not to have to go back and forth on 35, that if the city was able to donate, or provide, I should say, a scanner for another fire department, I think that would be easier for the residents overall. There's, you always see on the lost dogs or lost pets pages, hey, did you get him scanned? And so I spoke with chief, and he said that they are willing to scan the dogs or the cats, but they would need a scanner for that. And so what I did is, I requested the scanner that's already been donated, and I just wanted to get a replica. I don't know if they would fight over the good scanner, so I thought I would just try to get one for each.
Okay. Anybody would like discussion on?
What's the cost on the scanner?
It's in the backup material.
$319.
$19.
$319.
Make a motion to. Agenda item 29.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and second, and we have discussion, Councilmember Bradshaw?
Why would it not go to KPD, Animal Control?
Well, we could do that, I understand that, but that's going to take a lot of time away from KPD, because it should go to animal, if we went to Animal Control, they have set hours. So if somebody has a pet that they find after hours, they could take it to the fire department. So I'm not opposed for going to the police department, I just don't know if they, if they want to have that responsibility, since the fire department has already agreed to scan it for the residents.
Councilmember Heiser?
I mean, I'm going to vote yes to approve it. I mean, I, I think it would make sense for them to have it on the truck with them, like the benefit of them having a scanner, to me, is not so residents can bring a dog to the fire department, but it's for when the fire department is out in the field and they see an animal that is clearly without its home, that they're able to pick it up, just like our animal control is. Like that, to me, would be the benefit of having an extra set of hands out in the field, given we know how constrained our own animal control department already is.
Yeah, but if someone brings it to the fire department, then they can take it back. Whereas if the fire department picks it up, it now becomes your responsibility.
All right, whatever. I, I okay.
That's what I would assume.
Motion's on the table.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve $390.
Okay, I understand the motion's to approve and it's second, but to Councilmember Bradshaw's question, it, it does seem, seem reasonable, like why wouldn't the Kyle Police Department and their animal control have a scanner? And maybe chief could answer that, because again, most of the dangerous calls or the loose dogs, do the fire department come out, or is it the police?
As much as we would like for it to be the fire department, because we like those guys.
There we go.
It is our police officers. Our animal control officers, I think we have four of the scanner devices, we're able to get them for about $240 for the, for the kind that we purchase and use. They're available to both our animal control officers and our police officers that are on duty. They know where they're stored, so they can go pick one up and, and check a dog if somebody brings one to the PD. So I hope I've answered that question.
Let me understand, so we are trying to get a donation to the fire department in case that animal control is not available, so they can scan the pet?
So currently, Buda, their fire department scans dogs, and so somebody reached out to me and said, hey, this is what Buda's doing, is there any way that you guys can do it? And in that process, I learned that there was one donated by the county to the fire department, because.
And, and then, do we know how many, and I know it's just 300 bucks, do we know how many dogs go to, how many people go to the fire department?
No, I think, I would think it would be promoted. Like right now, I don't think, the, the fire department doesn't even have one. So this whole process is, is, is new, and so, I mean, I'm okay with saying no, I just wanted to bring it here to see if we were interested. That would give some relief to the police department, I would think, so they wouldn't have to go scan dogs when people could take them to the fire department.
Well, is there any way, since there will be a servicing to animal control, that we can get? Never mind.
Councilman Heiser?
I've changed my tune on this. If, if they don't even have one, if they haven't even purchased one for themselves, unless they're willing to purchase one for themselves, I'll, we'll match it. I mean, that's silly.
I agree. I think it's just something that.
Do you find that helpful, chief? Do you think it would be helpful for them to have a PET scanner? Be honest with us.
Just get them another fire hose.
Okay, okay, we got a motion on the table. Council, Councilmember Bradshaw?
It's going to be generated.
Chief, is there anything that you can do with that money that would help animal control instead?
You know, we will always certainly make the best use of the funds and purchase equipment necessary. Right now, we're well-funded, so I think we're in a good point this year. Every year we bring back a budget that will get us the necessary equipment and kennels and things that we need. I think we're in a good spot right now. I think if you do add, to answer the question, if you do want to give the fire department one of these, and those fire officials at the fire station are willing to, to invest the time, serve that citizen, look up the information that may be in a database based on the scanning of a chip, and then assist in the return of that dog to the, to the rightful owner, if that's what they're willing to do, then obviously this may reduce a call that comes into our dispatch center for an animal control officer or a police officer. Do I think that's certainly possible? Yes. Do I think that it's, it's advertised right now, and it's not? Obviously, the fire department's not advertising that service. I personally have not had a conversation with the fire department about how willing are they to invest the time and effort to find the owner, track down phone numbers, and keep the dog in a safe place while all this is going on? Because citizens are going to want to find that fire official that's advertising the PET scanner and pass that thing off to the fire department and then leave. They're not going to generally want to stick around. So in the time that the fire department runs it through the computers, finds the phone numbers, makes the phone calls, and the people are at work in Austin, they'll be here at five, will they keep it somewhere safe and in a kennel and it doesn't involve us? I don't know, I haven't asked them about how they intend to operate.
Yeah, so I wouldn't think that they would keep the dog at all, that's not their responsibility. The police department have a, animal control.
Yeah.
So.
If they're going to call us anyway, we have scanners, they might as well just call us and let us put it in a, in an animal control truck, or a kennel, or a cage, or something safe. Otherwise, well, they're going to call us anyway. If they're going to call us anyway, then we can get there and find the owner and take responsibility.
So, nobody wants to say this, chief, I'll say, it's a waste, it sounds like a waste of money.
Well, I wasn't going to say that.
All right, okay, listen up, we got a motion on the table for approval for purchasing this PET scanner to, to, for the Kyle Fire Department. We have a motion on the table. Do we have?
Was there a second?
Is there a second by, by Councilmember Flores, for, Councilmember Parson?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other further discussion on this? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passed a six to zero.
I'm a no.
Then you have to say no.
Oh, I was letting you guys say yes first.
Well, your silence is a yes.
Yeah.
Also, for the record, there had been a second, it was moved by Councilmember Zuniga and seconded by Flores Kail. I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sorry about all that, guys. All right, let's continue on, let's move on to item number 30. Consider possible action to amend gas station ordinance to prohibit excess fuel stations within the lot size and building skates. This is Councilman Zuniga's item.
Okay, thank you. Rachel, can I get the images on this one too? So the purpose behind this agenda item, and I'll try to be as clear as I can, is that we have a very busy intersection on 150 and Lehman, and there's a really nice development going up. It's TXB, I'm sure it's going to be very nice and attractive, but there's a lot of heavy traffic there. There's two stoplights. There, there, in this development, there will be two entrances. So one entrance that will lead you into Lehman, the other one on 150. But there's not a, there's not a, I guess, an access off, there's not an easy access off. So my concern is that when vehicles are going to go into the gas station, they have to cross over three lanes, maybe, maybe four lanes. And that's not the only real, real concern. Another one is that as this development has been sort of getting to the finish, I noticed that there are eight beams, and underneath these beams, if, if fuel pumps are centered right at the center, you could end up with eight fuel pumps there. However, that's not necessarily the real issue, the real issue is that it looks really congested in there. And because there's only going to be two ways into this new, new gas station, when I was looking at it from a distance, I could, I started to visualize that it's out, it seems to be out of scale. And the building itself, from the blueprints, is only about 150 feet, but the beam, the beams that are, that will have the, the gas pumps is two, are 210 feet. So I checked with Will and I said, what's going, what's going, what's going in there? He said, well, it's a gas station. And so we don't have any limit on how many pumps can be put into any retail area. So in theory, if they really wanted to, they could probably add up to 12, four more beams, add up to 12. So then you would have 24, 24 gas lines. So I was wondering, because this is also in a flood zone area, if we could look at our ordinance when gas stations are going to be built, and maybe be a little bit more conservative about the quantity of gas pumps when we're building gas stations in areas that are flood zones, and where the traffic is really difficult to get on and off into this type of station. And then I guess the third thing would be, does it match the scale of the, of the building itself? Which, that, in our ordinance, it doesn't really limit them. And, but I can't make it just about that, so what I'm saying is that I could see a lot of traffic congestions in here, and if there were fewer gas pumps here, I think that that, it would be a better public safety, from a, from a public safety standpoint, it would be a little bit easier to get in and out of this really congested area. So, and I don't know what other council members think. So, and I don't know what other council members think about something, about tightening up the ordinance when it relates to more fuel pumps.
Councilmember Parsley?
So if Bucys were to come with the twenty-five, thirty stations, we're gonna say no?
In certain locations, you would, I would think.
You know, I'm assuming first that we will have a building inspector to come and approve that the plans for these gas stations have been working out or not?
And, or not approve. And two, I do not want to put more restrictions on gas stations and number of pumps they're gonna bring as we keep growing and growing, and I don't want to say no to Bucys if they were to come with thirty pumps. So that, those are my thoughts on that.
Well, let's look at one fifty right now. That is very, very high density. That's very, very high traffic. So if we're saying we want to regulate how many pumps are in there, then imagine the backlog of cars trying to get in there just to get fuel versus having twelve pumps versus five pumps. Okay, because you have to, just like with any other development, you gotta look ten years down the road. And this is a corner spot area. I understand what your concern is, the, the way it looks, or it just seems like it's, the safety's not there for people to get in and out. But if somebody wants to turn left to go in there, obviously, they may not be able to make it through, but the traffic that's coming to thirty-five, and in the corner on the side, it would just have to mean that, that, that there's also a gas station that's right there on the corner. So if we start regulating, you know, we don't want to have this many pumps, then we might be setting ourselves up when the population gets seventy to eighty thousand. In this area, we're not allowing more than five pumps, and it, I know these businesses may not be able to survive off of that, because that's where a lot of they get their fuel from, not only just chips and sodas. So, but I understand your concern, because it's right on one fifty. But the way I look at it, like in about five years, those pumps are gonna be used quite often, and it's going to benefit the people that are gonna be leaving to get on thirty-five on that area. Councilmember Flores Cale?
Thank you. I would just like to briefly remind everybody about the report that we received when we approved the ordinance regarding the amount of gas stations we have versus the amount we needed. And I believe that number might have been like two point five, which means we have more than half. We have double, almost, what we need. But all that aside, I don't think it's just about limiting pumps. I think it's also about safety and putting these gas stations in areas where it's not gonna cause extra congestion. You know, I voted no for this, and I still reached out and talked to the, to the developer, and I'm excited, and I'm hoping they bring good food there. But anybody that can look at that picture can see the kind of congestion that's gonna go there, not just off of Lehman, but also off of one fifty. As, as of now, that whole road, all the way to thirty-five, gets backed up completely with traffic. So again, it's not like we want to limit, and to be honest, we're not going to say no to Bucys, I'd like to think, but Bucys isn't gonna go in this location. So it's also about being thoughtful when we stick a, you know, a gas station somewhere to make sure that it's in a safe place, that it's not gonna increase the traffic, and then it makes sense. So I don't know what kind of, or if any regulations we could create in order to make sure this doesn't happen to anybody anywhere in Kyle, east, west, south, whatever. Because I, that's my fear, is it's, it's gonna cause a lot of traffic and a lot of safety issues. Not to mention that it is in a flood plain, even though they had to elevate it, I know they had to raise it. I don't know to what extent. And so in the event that ever floods, that could be a real EPA issue with the gas tanks under the ground.
And can I also comment? I did look up, there are other locations in Austin. They have a lot fewer. So they, they took advantage of our ordinance, put more in there, which I, I believe they're a very community-friendly company. They're gonna do very well here. But they did take advantage of our ordinance, because, and other, and other locations that they have, they don't have this many. And also, if you look at our Costco and any of the other gas stations we have in town, this is the one that has, that is coming with the most fuel pumps, at a very highly congested corner. So I would just like to keep that in perspective, that Costco only has four pumps, has a huge parking lot. This little development is gonna have sixteen pumps. And it's less than a quarter acre, or less than a half acre.
Anybody else? Okay, what, what direction are we gonna want to go on this? Well, it says here to consider possible action to amend the gas station ordinance to prohibit access.
Maybe if, oops. Just a thought, if he wants to direct staff to just bring back some ideas, this doesn't mean we're gonna do it, and it doesn't mean that we're not. It just means to bring back, there's things that we don't think about as council members, because we're not planning. We don't do the planning department, and so I think there is no harm in maybe seeing what other cities have done. I know we, we read an article where a city did limit its size of pumps. And so is, does it even make sense to do that here in Kyle?
I would just like to ask, what did, when this development was approved, and this is in the past, so obviously, we're not gonna go back to change this. It's already been allowed. But was there any discussion of how many fuel pumps they were gonna have on site? Did they mention, did, did we know ahead of time how many were gonna be installed?
Okay, Councilmember Zunica, this is Will Atkinson, Planning Director for the record. I don't remember that specific aspect of the conversation, if that was a portion of it. When, when they re-owned the property and they were talking about those, they had said, we want to do a convenience store with a, with a deli and some outdoor seating, and they even have a rainwater catchment system.
Right.
And we, of course, at the convenience store, it's pretty common to have the canopy with, with fuel pumps. So everything they've done is within code. It meets other requirements for any flood plain regulations that we have. Some, the portion of the property at the back is in the flood plain, but they've pulled it out of it and what have you. It meets all the setbacks, it meets impervious cover. They also have to get their licensing through the state for the, for the buried fuel tanks and everything like that as well. Has to meet fire code, has to meet our landscaping code and everything like that. And they also have to get a tech stop permit for the driveway off of, directly off of one fifty.
Are they gonna cut into that one more, Will?
Are they gonna do what?
Are they gonna add, add like some sort of access off? Because you've got a little bridge, you have a bridge there and some sort of gate, so that'll be removed. How wide, how wide will that opening be for?
Are you talking about the railing on the bridge?
Right.
So they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to cut it and remove that bridge as wide as they need to to get from the tech stop approval.
So we're also gonna lose that sidewalk, right, for, because I see people that use the sidewalk on one fifty through there.
Where the sidewalk intersects with that, with the driveway cut, it's gonna have to be ADA compliant, so it's still gonna be level and what have you crossing that. So the sidewalk will still be there as part of the driveway permit.
So won't traffic go through that? Won't, won't, won't the road be built into that sidewalk? Won't the sidewalk be cut? I guess that's what I saw from...
I was trying to say that if they're, if they're gonna cut the sidewalk, will they still have cars to be able to?
Right.
How wide, I guess you're saying, how wide is it gonna be for these cars to get through? And how much of the?
Sidewalk.
We're losing the sidewalk.
How much sidewalk loss is gonna happen? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that for cars to go into the gas station, there has to be no more sidewalk there.
Yeah, of course.
So now pedestrians can't ride a bike or walk without watching for, for a vehicle coming into the gas station.
You do have to be careful whenever a driveway intersects with a sidewalk, without question. But the sidewalk and the pedestrian crossing of that driveway will still exist. It'll just be managed appropriately and what have you for the tech stop permit that tech stop has to approve. So tech stop's well aware that we require sidewalks. There's a sidewalk. What, there's a sidewalk existing there right now, and then there's gonna be the two portions of sidewalk intersecting with that driveway permit, so they'll have to take that into account as well in the review of it. And I don't know the, the minimum width for that driveway permit, but it will have to account for a vehicle going each way with adequate room.
Hey, did you want to make a motion to have staff?
Wait for what? I just wanted the ordinance to be revisited, maybe see where we can make it more conservative moving forward when locations like this are going to be retailed with gas stations, that we don't have excessive pumps.
So would you need that in a motion? Okay. You wanna go and make the motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to relook at the, this ordinance to see where we can have some sort of limit based on scale and intersection with gas, for gas pumps.
Okay, motion's on the table for city staff to look at the scale and also the limitations on what references, what your, your item is.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Flores Cale. Do we have any other discussions on the motion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in? Nope.
Both can you ask ayes and nays first?
Yes, okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One, two, three. Okay, so we have it four to three. Actually, sorry, three to three.
Three, three.
Three, three.
Parsley, Heiser, and Bradshaw voted no. Tobias, and Flores, and Zunica?
Yes.
So it's three, three. Motion fails. I guess motion fails? Motion fails. Okay, no executive items, correct? Okay, do I want to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.